So, Council, we are live. We've got a really packed agenda tonight. We have a pretty full council chamber, so we should get going. I want to start by recognizing and thanking our media partners for broadcasting and reporting on our meeting. I'd also like to take a minute. Leading up to Canada 150, we'll be doing historical minutes, and I wanted to start that tonight. So as we continue through this Canada 150 year, I'll be reading historical fact, one city council meeting each month throughout the rest of the year. The first one for tonight is, did you know that Sault Ste. Marie was incorporated as a village in 1871 with a population of 879 people? The first meeting of city council was held on July 29, 1871. And you should really take a visit to our local museum, the Sioux Museum, to learn all about our history. It's pretty fascinating. Madam Clerk, if we can start the meeting, please.
Agenda item one, adoption of minutes. I have a motion by councillors Nero and Hoopanen, resolve that minutes of regular council meeting of April 10, 2017 be approved.
All in favor? Carried. I note the absence of councillor Fatah tonight. Our thoughts and prayers are with councillor Fatah's family. Pina Fatah, councillor Fatah's wife, has lost her father. Councillor Fatah has lost his father-in-law, so our thoughts are with them.
Under Agenda item three, a declaration of junior interest? I don't have any.
Any declarations of junior interest? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. We'll start with councillor Compaugh and then councillor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. I have two, 6.1, point one, CCAA proceedings. I got a conflict. I'm with the USW. I'm a union coordinator. And item 6.2, retention of restructuring lawyer fee update. I also got a conflict for the same reasons.
Thank you. Councillor Shoemaker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.2, I don't have my agenda quite loaded yet, but I think it's retention of restructuring lawyer.
It is.
As my firm is involved in some of those proceedings.
Thank you. Any other councillors? Seeing none?
Under Agenda item four, I have a motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that the agenda for April 24, 2017, city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor? Carried.
Under Agenda item five, Agenda item 5.1, Community Living Awareness Month. Chris Dunn, the manager of Community and Family Services, Jason Hebert, council chair, and Jason Pratt, council member, are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Chris, Jason, and... Jason?
Hi, man, Go Hounds Go!
Go Hounds Go! I think they'll be strong next year.
That's right, Mayor!
Right now, we're going for the Senators and the Oilers, though.
No, thank you! Cut the middleies!
Mayor Provenzano, city councillors, and fellow community members, it is with pride that we stand before you today as the proclamation to announce Community Living Awareness Month is read. This is Jason Hebert, and he is the current chair of the Council of Community Living Algoma, and this is Jason Pratt, another valued member of our council.
This is Chris Dunn. That staff supports the, uh, the, our, um, community. We're here today on behalf of Community Living Algoma.
Community Living Algoma is an organization that provides supports and services to people with intellectual disabilities throughout the district of Algoma.
We support children, we support children and others to learn, live, learn, and walk in the community, and we are, uh, I forgot, advocate of choice, so that people can have better lives.
Community Living Algoma works hard every day to educate others to ensure that all people belong and are welcomed. It is our continued goal to be a part of a community in which everyone is accepted, is actively involved, and has a willingness to give back.
We look forward to the challenge that is coming, is bringing with pride and excitement.
During our activities throughout Awareness Month, we will acknowledge all of the hard work of our dedicated employees and volunteers who do what they can every day to enhance the lives of the people we support and their families.
We're here to, we're here to thank you for your, uh, support, our support, listening for our message on behalf of CRA.
Thank you. I have a proclamation here to read. Whereas Community Living Algoma has provided supports and services to people with intellectual disabilities and their families in the city of Sault Ste. Marie and surrounding district since 1954, and now provide services to 456 adults and 454 children. Whereas Community Living Algoma's goal is that people with intellectual disabilities have every opportunity to participate fully in our community with dignity, independence, and acceptance. And whereas Community Living Algoma works for the city of Sault Ste. Marie, volunteers and other stakeholder groups and organizations to promote citizenship for people with intellectual disabilities, so they have the rights, responsibilities, and opportunities that come with belonging, participating, and contributing as a valued member in our society. And whereas Community Living Awareness Month is a province-wide initiative created to celebrate the values of community living, which are inclusion, equality, and respect. Now therefore, I, Mayor Christian Provenzano, as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim May 1st to May 31st, 2017, to be Community Living Awareness Month in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you.
Look at me!
Under Agenda item 5.2, Saint Mary's Ukrainian Catholic Church 100th Anniversary, Reverend Jaroslav Lazor, better known as Father Jerry, and members of the Centennial Committee are in attendance.
Welcome to council, Father Jerry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, I'm really grateful to be here with my members of our committee, Mrs. Mary Borowitz, Mrs. Donna Caputo, Mrs. Yola Kubin, Ms. Karen Prostchak, Mr. Roxy Greystone, and Mr. Ray Revco. 2017 is a very important year for our community. Not only is it a year of Canada's 150th birthday, but 2017 also marks the 100th anniversary of Saint Mary's Ukrainian Catholic Church in Sault Ste. Marie. At the turn of the 19th century, migrating Ukrainians were attracted to job opportunities at the Sault Ste. Marie Steel Mill, formerly known as Algoma Steel. By 1916, a Ukrainian community had been established in a Bayview area within walking distance to the mill. With only 18 families on hand, this hard-working and faithful group initiated a construction of a church, even though they were without a permanent priest. Priests would travel through Sault Ste. Marie occasionally and would celebrate divine liturgies, perform marriages, and baptisms. The church of, at 118 Pittsburgh Street, was completed in 1917 with the help of the local Polish, Croatian, Italian, French, and English communities. Several priests would serve at Saint Mary's over the following 40 years plus. But it wasn't until 1985 that our church faced a monumental decision about its future. 1985, Father Anton Shumihalsky was assigned to Saint Mary's at the request of His Excellency Bishop Isidor Boreki to help make the parish more vibrant, accessible. It soon became apparent that the original church had outgrown its capacity and was desperate need of significant repairs. Furthermore, a majority of parishioners had moved away from the original Bayview subdivision. Under the Father's Anton leadership, tireless efforts, plans for a new church were unveiled. Construction began in September 1987 in the city's central location on top of the hill, right across the street from Saint Basil Catholic Secondary School and North America's tallest freestanding laded cross. In April 198, 1989, the first divine liturgy was celebrated in a church basement. And on September 3rd, 1989, the new church was consecrated by His Excellency Bishop Isidor Boreki. After 72 years, a dream of a beautiful and a new house of worship for Saint Mary's Catholic Church was fulfilled. The years that followed saw the parish grow and flourish with fundraising efforts in a full swing to pay off a little mortgage that we had. Saint Mary's past and the present involvement include events such as annual Christmas teas, bazaars, monthly brunches, lobster fairs, banquets, and of course, thousands of dozens of pierogies and cabbage rolls and other wonderful treats from the parish kitchen. On September 14, 2014, the parish officially burned the mortgage, burned its mortgage, which originally was a million dollars, which was paid off as a result of tireless efforts and countless volunteer, both parishioners and non-parishioners alike. In fact, we had been called the church that pierogies built. So here we are, celebrating 100 years as a parish community. We wish to thank the citizens of Sault Ste. Marie and Algoma, many visitors from all over the world for supporting us at all this time. Our parish is also grateful for the council's ongoing support of our efforts, and we invite everyone to visit and learn more about the Byzantine Catholic tradition practices Saint Mary's Church. On May 7th, a typical mass will be celebrated by His Excellency Bishop Stephen Miller at 2:00 PM, followed by a dinner banquet at Quateras Conventional Centre. Everyone is welcome to attend. God bless and thank you. Mr. Mayor, if you'll be kind enough to read our proclamation.
Happily, Father Jerry. Whereas the original Saint Mary's Ukrainian Catholic Church was built in 1917 at 118 Pittsburgh Street in the Bayview area by a group of hard-working and faithful volunteers and shared with the Roman Catholic community for 24 years until the first permanent priest arrived in 1942. And whereas the church was renovated and expanded in 1958 due to an influx of Ukrainian immigrants. And whereas in 1987, construction of a new church in the city's central location on top of the hill adjacent from its neighbor, Saint Basil's Catholic Secondary School, began. And whereas in September 3rd, 1989, the new church was consecrated by His Excellency Bishop Isidor Boreski. And whereas Saint Mary's Ukrainian Catholic Church's 100th anniversary celebrations are dedicated to those early pioneers who embraced the challenges of their dreams to provide a place of worship for themselves and for future generations. It is with sincere gratitude we commemorate their strong faith and their unselfish contributions. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st to May 7th, 2017, as Saint Mary's Ukrainian Catholic Church 100th Anniversary, living in faith and community in the city of Sault Ste. Marie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda item 5.3, Motorcycle Awareness, Jerry Rhodes, chairman of the bikers' rights organization, is in attendance.
I brought a herd.
Are all your bikes parked out, are all your bikes parked out front?
There's a few.
There's a few.
Good afternoon, your honor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jerry Rhodes, and I am the chair of the local bikers' rights organization. I and my colleagues are here at this meeting to request memorial proclamation for motorcycle awareness for the first week in May. Our organization is a not-for-profit advocacy group with five aims and objectives, and we have been active in the community of Sault Ste. Marie for over 33 years. The objects and purpose to which Bro and its members are dedicated are to foster and develop improved community understanding and awareness of motorcycles and operators by actively supporting charities, by providing services and/or monies, and by instigating motorcycle safety through public awareness programs; to foster and improve motorcycle safety and responsible riding practices in the motorcycle community; to promote and develop friendship and understanding among all motorcyclists; to promote legislation affecting motorcycles generally, and to oppose or support, as the case may be, any contemplated legislation by provincial, municipal, or other authorities insofar as the same may affect the motorcycling community; and to endeavor to achieve a closer relationship and better understanding between motorcycle owner, operators, and the law enforcement officers with a goal of identifying and solving problems of mutual concern. Motorcycles are an integral part of traffic in our community, and they have played an important role in Canada's military over the various conflicts our country has been involved in. They have been and continue to be a vital tool in the equipment used by law enforcement and our source of recreation, economy, and the basis of a lifestyle enjoyed by many within our community. Unfortunately, each year persons die while employing this facet of the total transportation scene in Ontario and our community. As motorcyclists, we are more vulnerable than those in automobiles. As part of our mandate, we promote motorcycle safety, and often, we cooperate with others and seek assistance in this endeavor from others to further this goal. To that effect, we are here today to request a memorial proclamation for the first week in May as Motorcycle Awareness Week as a means of helping alert the community of Sault Ste. Marie, both motorcyclists and automobile drivers, that motorcycles have once again returned to the roads of our community. The importance of knowing we have returned in numbers and the importance of sharing the road cannot have too many sources. We would like to remind all motorists to look twice, save a life. We would be most appreciative of the assistance of mayor and council in this endeavor. And off script, this is more poignant because we just lost somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. We have that proclamation. Whereas the motorcycle is an important part of recreation and transportation in Canada and has played supporting roles with our military and law enforcement agencies. And whereas in 2015, there were 217,049 officially licensed motorcycles and scooters in the province of Ontario. And whereas 164 motorcycle enthusiasts were killed in Ontario city streets and highways since 2011 to date, an awareness of sharing the road with all users can exist to reduce these fatalities. And whereas the Sault Ste. Marie Bikers Rights Organization Region 22 wished to promote the education, safe riding habits for motorcycles, and motorcycle awareness on our city streets. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim April 30th to May 6th, 2017, Sault Ste. Marie Motorcycle Awareness Week and encourage all of the people using our roads to pay attention to one another. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda item 5.4, National Day of Mourning, Michelle McLeve, president, Sault Ste. Marie District Labor Council, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. McLeve.
Good afternoon, mayor and councillors. Every year on April 28th, the National Day of Mourning, labor organizations across Canada honor and remember all workers who have been killed or critically injured while on the job, including workers who have died from occupational disease. We as a society know that it is unacceptable that 1,000 workers are killed across Canada every year for simply trying to make a living to support their families. Thousands more are critically injured or suffering from a slow death of occupational disease. April 28th is an important and solemn day for all of us. We gather at ceremonies to take time to mourn the dead, but it is also time to once again commit to fight for the living. We invite the community of Sault Ste. Marie to a commemorative service at the Grand Garden, 68 Dennis Street, at 11 o'clock on Friday, April 28th, 2017. Refreshments will be served following this ceremony, and we hope that the community will join us for this solemn ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a proclamation. Whereas the National Day of Mourning is held annually on April 28th to commemorate workers who have been killed, injured, or suffered illness due to workplace-related hazards and incidents. And whereas the purpose of the Day of Mourning is to remember and honor those workers and to renew commitment to improve health and safety in the workplace. And whereas April 28th was chosen to be the National Day of Mourning, as it coincides with the day in 1914 that the Workers' Compensation Act received its third reading. And whereas the Canadian flag on Parliament Hill will fly at half-mast, and workers and employers across Canada will observe this day by lighting candles, donning ribbons, and black armbands, and observing moments of silence. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2017, as the Day of Mourning in the city of Sault Ste. Marie in recognition of workers killed, injured, or disabled on the job. Thank you.
Under Agenda item 5.5, Strive Young Professionals Group, Erica Provenzano, advocacy officer with the Strive Young Professionals Group executives, in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Provenzano.
Thank you very much, Mayor Provenzano and councillors, for allowing me the opportunity to speak this evening on behalf of Strive Young Professionals Group. My name is Erica Provenzano, and I serve on the Strive Executive Committee as the advocacy officer. I also have a couple of my colleagues from the executive team here with me this evening, Ashley Gerard, who is our chair, and Dean Bealhart, who is our marketing officer. We as the Strive Executive have been working very hard with local groups, individuals, and businesses in our community to plan events for our members centered around professional development, networking, and community involvement. Strive is committed to increasing the opportunities for young professionals in Sault Ste. Marie and retaining youth in our city. Strive members also see the importance of being present and at the forefront of community initiatives, events, and causes. We aim to bring attention to the importance of the collective interests of our young professionals and their visions for a prosperous future for Sault Ste. Marie. The Young Professionals Network of Ontario designates a week in May as Young Professionals Week, highlighting what is important to young professionals both now and into the future. This year, Young Professionals Week is going national, where various networks and cities across Canada will participate by hosting accompanying events to help educate the public about the importance and potential of young professionals in Canada's workforce. Our economic, social, and cultural frameworks are strengthened with the drive and force of Canada's young professionals today. In coordination with the Young Professionals Network of Ontario, Strive would like to officially proclaim the very first Young Professionals Week in Sault Ste. Marie from May 14th to the 20th to celebrate how young professionals are making a huge difference in our community. Our plans currently for Young Professionals Week in the Sioux include a kickoff event at our monthly Strive at 5:00, happening at HD Sports Bar and Grill on Friday, May 12, and a luncheon learn on Monday, May 15 at OLG, where we'll be highlighting all that Strive has to offer, both for our members and the community. We will also be featuring daily spotlights of local young professionals throughout the week. More details will be posted on our Facebook and website for the week's events coming. We invite all young professionals out May 14th to the 20th to gain career advice, learn about Strive, and meet some great people. On behalf of the Strive Executive, I would like to thank Mayor Provenzano and council for their ongoing support of young professionals in Sault Ste. Marie.
Thank you. Appreciate the work you do, Erica, Ashley, and Dean. Before I read the proclamation, I just wanted to clarify one point. We say young professionals, but we want to make sure that people that are watching appreciate that that word is very broad, and it's not just referring to, say, a lawyer, right? You're referring to all young people that are in entrepreneurial businesses and really any young person in your demographic that wants to come out and network and meet other people of, that are interested in discussing some of the economic things that are happening in our community, really.
That's right.
So we're correct just to say professional's very broad here?
It is.
Everybody's welcome. Tradespeople are welcome and, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that's an important point to note. Whereas Strive Young Professionals work in partnership with the Young Professional Network of Ontario to build and promote professional development, community involvement, and networking opportunities in Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas the Young Professional Network of Ontario has proclaimed May 14th, 2017, as Young Professional Week across Canada, bringing together local networks to engage in meaningful conversations and events. And whereas Strive aims to increase advocacy and awareness surrounding young professionals in our community, including retention and attraction at Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas Young Professionals Week will provide an opportunity for young professionals to connect, network, and build relationships in order to help foster a stronger community and the future for Sault Ste. Marie. Now therefore, I, Christian Provenzano, as mayor of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, do hereby proclaim and pronounce the week of May 14th to May 20th as Young Professionals Week in Sault Ste. Marie, and ask that the community come together to support our local young professionals and entrepreneurs and the endeavors of Strive Young Professional Group. Thank you very much for your work. It's important.
Thank you.
Under Agenda item 5.6, Air Cadet Weekend, Captain Jim Brown, commanding officer, 155 Air Cadet Squadron, and Ben Fisher, warrant officer, second class, are in attendance.
Captain Brown, Mr. Fisher, welcome to council.
Hello, sir. Mayor Provenzano, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Captain Jim Brown. I'm the commanding officer of the 155 Board and Gray Squadron, GC Royal Canadian Air Cadets. With me in the chambers today are warrant officer, second class, Ben Fisher. He's our top cadet in our organization, i.e., one of the best, and, and our literally most experienced cadet, we'll put it that way. And we also have the Air Cadet League of Director, or Air Cadet League of Canada Director, Peter Patana, with me on my left. You may see this little bear right here. This is our mascot, LAC Bear. LAC Bear basically travels the world on behalf of the cadets in the squadron. This little guy has experienced things like going behind the wire in Afghanistan on combat missions. He's sailed with the, with the Royal Canadian Navy somewhere in the Atlantic Ocean, flown CF-18, so it's a lot of things that we would aspire to do that, that LAC Bear gets to do for us, so we like to bring him to these events. And he just returned from a trip to Vimy Ridge, where he was honoring the veterans that gave their lives there as well. So it's, this is what the bear is about here. It's a great honor that you bestow upon us today. We appreciate your time, your service. men for military service, while providing interest in aviation and good citizenship. The 155 Squadron joined the hundreds of other Canadian Cadet League squadrons across the country to train future air crews and pilots to join the ranks of the Royal Canadian Air Force during World War II. In 1953, the Squadron Pipe Band was formed with Canadian artist Ken Danby as the bass drummer, which over the years has played at the Canadian National Exhibition, the G Summit, and many other notable venues. The Pipe and Drum Band has won many Northern Ontario and Ontario Provincial Cadet Band Championships. They currently hold the Best Cadet Band in Ontario Award as well. In the 80s, we brought Highland dancers into the performance, and over the years, the Highland dancers have brought a whole other dynamic to what we do. Now other cadet squadrons in the province look at what we do and try to emulate the greatness that is the cadets in our squadron. We have a drill team, and our drill team has also won top honours in Northern Ontario and as well provincial championships over the number of years that they have been in existence. In 1956 and 63, the 155 Squadron was recognised as the top air cadet squadron in Canada, and four times as top squadron in Ontario. In 1973, the first female air cadets were enrolled and started training with the 155 Squadron. Up until then, females weren't allowed to be members of a cadet squadron, it was for males only. So this was a huge step for females in this area. The first female air cadet in Canada to solo for her private pilot's licence was from our squadron, 155 Air. On August 22nd, 1989, the 155 Squadron was renamed the 155 Borden Gray G C Squadron in recognition of Flying Officer Borden Gray G C, who was posthumously awarded the George Cross in 1944 for his self-sacrifice of giving up a spot on a life raft to save others in his downed air crew. I turn this over to Warrant Fisher to continue.
Thank you, sir. The Dr Roberta Bondar Air Cadet Training Programme started in 2016 with the partnership of the 155 Squadron and the Canadian Bush Plane Heritage Centre to train cadets for aircraft maintenance and related training in a hands-on environment. This training is under the supervision of qualified instructors using static aero engines and aircraft that are part of the Canadian Bush Plane Heritage Centre. The 155 Squadron continues to provide good citizenship and aviation-related training to youth in Sioux-Saint-Murray and area in a challenging yet fun learning environment open to any youth aged 12 to 18, and we're always looking for new recruits. There have been 94 youth that have solowed and earned their glider or power pilot's licence through the cadet programme from Sioux-Saint-Murray. All of these 155 Squadron air cadets have gone on to military or civilian careers, some in aviation, with all carrying on the traditions of those that went before them. Some notable alumni of the 155 Squadron are Wing Commander Ron Clemmison, Order of Canada 1940s, a Canadian artist Ken Danby, who served in the 1950s, and currently there are five senior officers and one non-commissioned officer serving the Canadian Armed Forces that are alumni of the 155 Squadron.
So this year, the Squadron is celebrating their 75th anniversary. The weekend of May 5 to 7 is our alumni presentation celebration. We've invited alumni from literally all across the country to come and join us to celebrate this suspicious occasion and this important year. So, Mayor Provinzano.
Thank you. So whereas the 155 Borden Gray G C Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron will celebrate the Squadron's 75th Annual Review Parade on May 6th, 2017. And whereas the air cadet movement has grown to establish aims of adopting society's concerns towards the environment, equality, and the prevention of abuse. And whereas the motto of the Royal Canadian Air Cadets is "To learn, to serve, the advance". And whereas on the 18th of August, 1942, a Dominion Charter was granted by the Air Cadet League of Canada to 155 Sioux-Saint-Murray Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron. And whereas our youth are educated, developed, and trained in part through their involvement in community-based activities and organisations. And whereas the Corporation of the City of Sioux-Saint-Murray wishes to recognise the cadets, officers, sponsors, and volunteers who over the last 75 years have given service to our city and have been members of the air cadet programme. And whereas the city has enjoyed a unique relationship with the 155 Borden Gray G C Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron and its members since its inception by distinguishing themselves through their commitment, leadership skills, discipline, and promotion of physical fitness of the youth within Sioux-Saint-Murray. And whereas the city would like to acknowledge with admiration all of the alumni of the 155 Squadron, as they celebrate 75 years of community service with the highest degree of honour. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint-Murray, do hereby proclaim and pronounce May 5th to May 7th as Air Cadet Weekend in Sioux-Saint-Murray that recognises the 155 Borden Gray G C Royal Canadian Air Cadet Squadron and their service to the citizens of Sioux-Saint-Murray. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Under Agenda Item 5.7, Emergency Preparedness Week, Lauren Perry, Assistant Chief Emergency Management, is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mayor Provinzano, councillors, and guests. Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to remind everyone about Emergency Preparedness Week, which runs this year from May 7th to 13th. Emergency Preparedness Week is a Canada-wide initiative aimed at increasing awareness about individual and family preparedness. Emergencies can strike at any time, and our community's participation in Emergency Preparedness Week will help to build a more resilient Sioux-Saint-Murray. While most people recognise the need for being prepared, most have yet to take the steps. A recent survey conducted in our community shows that financial constraints are the most common barriers that prevent Siouxites from getting prepared. Because of this, EP Week 2017 will focus on how to get prepared in a budget-friendly way. Starting May 8th, Sioux Fire Services will be starting a 20 Weeks to Emergency Preparedness campaign through Facebook, Twitter, and the city's website. The campaign will provide steps for residents to build a budget-friendly emergency kit and plan in 20 weeks. Additionally, residents will have a chance to win emergency kit supplies by participating in Sioux Fire's social media contests throughout Emergency Preparedness Week. On May 13th, the annual Emergency Preparedness Showcase is taking place at the Great Northern Road Walmart from 11 to 2 p.m. This is a fantastic opportunity for the community to come out and meet our emergency response network, including local emergency radio operators, electrical safety authority, Sioux Search and Rescue, police, OPP, fire, EMS, the Voluntary Persons Registry, PUC, Huron Central Rail, and Canadian Forces. There will be hot drinks, mascots, free giveaways, vehicle tours, and demos. Additionally, the Sioux-Saint-Murray Humane Society will be on-site to promote pet preparedness and register dogs. So bring your pets with you, as there will be a pet photo booth set up to take pictures of your animals for your emergency kit. There'll be plenty to see and do, so come out, meet your emergency response partners, and learn more about what you can do to ensure your family's own safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Whereas Sioux-Saint-Murray is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city, and recognises the importance of emergency management in Ontario. And whereas the goal of Emergency Preparedness Week is to raise community awareness and the need to prepare for the possibility of an emergency. And whereas during Emergency Preparedness Week, residents will identify and learn about risks in their community, and how they can protect themselves and their families by planning ahead and being prepared. And whereas all levels of government have an important role to play in emergency preparedness in response, but ultimately, emergency preparedness is the responsibility of each and every one of us, and we must prepare now to secure a stronger and healthy tomorrow. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint-Murray, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th to May 13th, 2017 as Emergency Preparedness Week, and I encourage all citizens to participate in educational activities on emergency preparedness. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Agenda Item 5.8, Children's Mental Health Week, Ali Juma, CEO Algoma Family Services, is in attendance.
Mr. Juma, welcome to council.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and community members. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I am the CEO for Algoma Family Services, a role I've held for the last two years. I'm here tonight with my children and my other children from our Union Youth Group. I wanted to share with you that one in four children suffer from a mental health challenge, and 70% of these mental health challenges emerge in adolescents. Further, there are over 6,500 children and youth in the province of Ontario that have been waiting for more than a year to receive service. As the Designated Child and Youth Mental Health Lead Agency, Algoma Family Services, in collaboration with the Canadian Mental Health Association, is doing its part to raise awareness with regard to mental health, reducing the stigma attached to receiving help, and to make access to services easier, such as our walk-in counselling services offered in collaboration with Algoma Public Health, the Canadian Mental Health Association, John Howard Society, and the Sioux Area Hospital. I'd like to take this moment just to acknowledge Annette Kadamajaki, the Executive Director for the Canadian Mental Health Association, who's also here with us, and Lisa Caracato, the community educator. Our celebration, this theme is "The Sky's the Limit", same as it was last year. We really like that theme. And so we're going to celebrate children, youth, and adults' aspirations, dreams, and visions. The activities we have planned this year include a paint party for youth and emerging adults on May 3rd, and our second annual youth concert on May 4th. You have the posters before you. We hope that you'll join us. Last year, we had over 200 people come here, our local talent. It was truly awesome. Mayor Provinzano, I have two tickets for you there. Hopefully you'll be able to join us.
We'll do our best.
Awesome. The city and all municipalities are invited to go green, so green is the theme, and as you can see with our balloons and our green-coloured outfits, we're here in full force. For more information on our activities, we encourage the citizens of Sioux-Saint-Murray to visit our website, or like us on our Facebook to receive updates on our activities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for your proclamation and support for the mental health of our children, youth, and adults.
Thank you, Mr. Juma. I'll read the proclamation. Whereas one in four kids in Ontario struggle with mental health. And whereas ensuring the mental health of our children and youth is essential to their growth and their development. Whereas children and adolescents can suffer various mental health challenges, including depression, anxiety, eating disorders, conduct disorders, attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, schizophrenia, and bipolar disorder. And whereas many children and youth who would benefit from mental health services are not receiving the help that they need. Whereas learning to recognise the early warning signs of mental health challenges and where to obtain the necessary assistance and treatment gives children and youth better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. Now therefore, I, Christian Provinzano, as Mayor of the City of Sioux-Saint-Murray, do hereby proclaim May 1st to May 7th, 2017 as Children's and Youth Mental Health Week, and encourage all citizens of Sioux-Saint-Murray to work together to raise awareness of the mental health needs of the children and our community. Thank you.
Under Agenda Item 5.9, Huron Central Railway, Louis Gravel, President, Genesee in Wyoming Inc., and Alison Horbatuk, General Manager of Huron Central Railway, are in attendance.
Welcome to council.
Thank you. Thank you for giving us the time to listen to us and explaining our project. We have a small presentation. And I'm Louis Gravel, President of Genesee Wyoming Canada and President of Huron Central. And I'm with Alison Horbatuk. She's General Manager for Huron Central.
So welcome to council. We're in your hands. We will go through the presentation, and then we'll have a motion that we'll review after that.
Okay, thank you. So Genesee, Wyoming, Canada, we operate a nine railway in Canada. Four of those railways are based in Ontario, and we operate also Huron Central from Sioux-Saint-Murray to Sudbury. Huron Central represents 44 employees, most of them based here in Sioux-Saint-Murray. We're having 14,000 carloads per year, and the railway length is 250 kilometres or 175 miles. We have three major customers on the line that represent 88% of our volume. SR Steel is the major 154%, and we also have Domtar and Espanola and ECOM in the east portion of the railway. In 2010, we were in a similar situation, so we were able to sustain the future together by having a contribution by the Ontario Government and the federal government. Both of them were $15 million. Huron Central was supposed to invest 3.4 at that time, and we invested finally $12 million. We, the main goal we achieved at that time, that was to sustain the railway for another five years, and we are in year 7.5 now. So we can say that the survival was achieved, and there was also a lot of good things that happened following that. We had on page 16, and then a study that proved that we were able to save a lot of the maintenance on the road, that represented $35 million for additional maintenance caused by the trucking industry if the railway would not survive. We reduced the environmental cost by $2 million, the greenhouse gas. And also, the fact that the railway was there, that avoided 20,000 trucks on the road, regional road, and that we know what type of congestion and accident that can cause also. So during those five years, we were able to achieve that. What we're asking the town of Sioux-Saint-Murray today is really to support us and our work that we're doing with the Government of Ontario and the Government of Canada, to have a local sponsor to help us to promote the future of Huron Central. So we're not asking money today to the town, we're just asking support, and that support is really critical and essential to us. So again, we're in a similar situation. We're asking for capital found to, for the infrastructure mainly, a little bit for the equipment and the crossing. We know our safety is important. There's almost $8 million for refurbishing all the crossing along the Huron Central.
So you're asking the provincial and federal governments for financial support.
So we already presented in the past that there's a lot of direct benefit. We preserve jobs, we create employment locally also. Just doing that work, we'll need to hire more people. So we know that there's a lot of direct benefit having Huron Central stay here. There's also some strategic benefits. We are essential to SR Steel. We're handling more than 60% of their volume, so we're critical to their future also. And we know the railway is an important link for future economic development in the regions. We believe that in the future, having a railway is an advantage for the region to grow the And again, we, that's what we're promoting with the short line in Canada in general. We believe that the railway is a greener way of transportation than the trucks, so we're promoting that, and we're trying to encourage people using the railway more and more to decrease the green gas emission. And it's safer for the road and the congestion also. So in conclusion, we're asking your support in our work that we're doing for the government.
Okay. So we have a motion, and we have some questions. So what I thought we would do maybe is we could read the motion first, so then council has the context of the motion before it, and then any questions council has for the representatives from Huron Central, they can answer, and we can then proceed. So Madam Clerk?
A motion by councillors Butland and Christian. Whereas the growth plan for Northern Ontario and the municipality of Sioux-Saint-Murray recognise the importance of having sustainable, cost-competitive multimodal transportation infrastructure. And whereas Genesee in Wyoming Canada Inc. is a short-line railway holding company that owns or maintains interest in nine railways throughout Canada, including the Huron Central Railway, which operates a freight service over 280 kilometres of railway between Sioux-Saint-Murray and Sudbury, leased from Canadian Pacific Railway. And whereas this short-line rail service lowers costs for manufacturing customers, reduces environmental impacts, decreases cost of road maintenance, and provides for safer roads by reducing the level of truck traffic east of Sioux-Saint-Murray. And whereas over 64% of the railway's customer business originates from Sioux-Saint-Murray, with its primary customer being the city's steel manufacturing plant. And whereas the Huron Central Railway has recently advised that it has insufficient freight volumes to generate revenue necessary for sustainable capital investment to maintain and rehabilitate the rail line. And whereas in 2009, Huron Central Railway advised the city that due to insufficient revenue to maintain and rehabilitate the railway, it would be ceasing its short-line railway operations, and CPR, the railway's owner, advised it would be commencing the rail abandonment process pursuant to federal regulations. And whereas over the course of 2009 and 2010, Huron Central Railway worked in partnership with affected municipalities and industries in the region to secure $33 million in federal provincial infrastructure funding and completed critical rehabilitation of the railway. And whereas Huron Central Railway presented a request to city council seeking its support to secure necessary government funding to undertake additional rehabilitation and maintenance of this short-line railway infrastructure to maintain this vital transportation service. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sioux-Saint-Murray City Council supports Huron Central Railway's efforts to secure the funding necessary- Railway's efforts to secure the funding necessary to enable the railway between Sioux St. Marie and the CPR connection in Sudbury to continue to provide a short-line freight service.
Okay, Council Butland?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Question, so we're in the same situation we were several years ago, and met with success. I wasn't an integral part of this, but I remember attending a couple of meetings in which there was a very comprehensive committee from people down the line, chaired by Joe Fortese, I believe, at that time. So, a resolution's a resolution, but that's not a great deal of support. Are you asking for something? You're not asking for anything beyond that?
No, but not to the town itself. We already made a lot of approach to Minister Garnaut, Minister Del Duca, and the provincial. So, yes, we're very active with the politician on the provincial and federal level to secure those funds, yes. But we haven't got an answer yet. So, we, we know that Minister Garnaut announced an envelope of $10 billion for the global network, but there's no detail in that plan yet. So, we don't know where we will fit in that plan.
It's important to everybody down the line, but the fact that SR Steel is your main supplier or customer, that's very important to us. But every five or seven years, we can't be doing the same thing. What will make the operation economically feasible beyond just the subsidies from the government?
Yeah, our goal is really to secure the railway, and we can commit that we will secure the railway for another five years. And in five years, there's a lot of things that can happen, and we believe that the mining industry and there's other business that can grow around Sioux St. Marie to improve the volume and the tonnage, to make that profitable in the long term. But our commitment is really to maintain the railway in place, and the railway is a link to grow the business. So, we will, when there's no railway, most of the investor will, will walk away. So, when there's a railway, that is an essential link to generate some movement, positive movement here in Sioux St. Marie.
Good luck. Thank you. Council Compaugh?
Thank you, Mayor Provenzano. We've got quite a bit of experience there in the past with rails and the local production of rails. In fact, we worked in the realm for over a decade, and I find it interesting that the rails that were shipped out were shipped mainly by rail service. And, you know, the rails that we produced locally supplied probably about 400 or 500 jobs locally, and they were really good-paying jobs for our local economy. But it was critical to have that rail infrastructure in place, and we certainly support a local sponsorship to be able to help these move forward, and we certainly support rail infrastructure in place, not only locally, but here in our whole area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Merci beaucoup, Monsieur Jules. I don't think it's any surprise to the folks here that we have two candidates at our table who are running for provincial office right now, and there's a third who used to sit, sit at this council table. So, I think it would be great if they all raised this with their parties and advocated for it in the upcoming by-elections, so that this can be on the province's agenda. And I know I spoke with Mr. Sheehan today. It's on his agenda, and I hope that there can be some movement on this for the sake of our industries, for the sake of our, you know, sustainability and attraction of future industries here.
Okay, any other questions from the councillors? So, sorry, Council Bruny, I apologize. I didn't have you noted. Go ahead, Council Bruny.
Okay. I'd like to ask a question to staff, if it's possible.
Sure.
And I guess I will direct it to, and I forget her name right now, because Susan Hamilton Beach.
Susan Hamilton Beach.
Took me a pause. For the railroad crossings, who's responsible for the repair work? And the reason why I'm asking you is because for several years, there's signs that say, not road construction, but bumps or something. It's never been repaired, the crossings, and Carmen's Way is one of them, Second Line, Conme Avenue. Who's responsible for the repairs for those?
Through you, Mayor Provenzano, to Council Bruny. There is shared responsibility on many of the crossings. They are individually, they do have to be individually looked at, because sometimes it's 100% on the rail, sometimes it is 100% ours. The ones that you mentioned, I believe mainly the responsibility lies with the rail company, but we can review them certainly each spring. We do have to look at them, as well as the rail company does have to review each crossing.
Okay, thank you. Council Mano?
I will speak solely as a city councillor and indicate that it is really important for us to lobby as much as we can to try to have this done for us. It is certainly essential for our community.
So, I've had a number of conversations with these folks, and we've connected them with the EDC, and we'll continue to communicate with them and see where they're at in the process and how we can be of assistance. It seems to me that there's a lot of support on council, so maybe we'll call the vote. And all in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's very appreciated.
We'll be in touch. So... Council, before we get to the planning agenda at 5:30, we have a few minutes, and we have another delegation here on Council Christian's motion, which is 8.4, the Northeastern Ontario Rail Network. Seems to me so these folks don't have to wait a whole long time. Maybe we can move 8.4 up the list if everybody's agreeable. So, Madam Clerk, if we could read Council Christian's motion, 8.4, and then our current delegation could participate and will be here for that, and then we can...
A motion by councillors Christian and Bruny. Whereas Northern Ontario has approximately 6,000 kilometers of existing rail structure. And whereas Northern Ontario has a transportation network that is increasingly fragile due to climate change, natural disasters, and limited government funding. And whereas Northern and Eastern Ontario Rail Network is actively attempting to demonstrate to the provincial and federal governments the need for publicly-supported investment in Northern Ontario's rail system. And whereas passenger rail service in Northern Ontario is an essential, is an essential infrastructure component for economic investment, resource development, tourism, access to essential healthcare, and socio-economic connectivity. Now therefore, be it resolved that city council and the city of Sioux St. Marie endorse the efforts of the Northern and Eastern Ontario Rail Network and their advocacy for the reinstatement of reliable and affordable passenger rail service in Northeastern Ontario.
Okay, so, Council Christian, would you like to speak to that?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'll keep it very brief. I think as Siouxites and as Northerners, we've discussed this issue and looked at this issue in the past. Excuse me, I don't think there's any doubt of the importance of rail service in Northern Ontario. I've said it before, I'll say it again. It's, it's part of our heritage. It's part of who we are, and it's, I think it's absolutely essential. So, when I was approached to pen the resolution along with Counselor Bruny, I was more than happy to do so. I'm sure the delegation or representative might have something to say, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I don't think it needs any more explanation.
Nope. Any other councils have questions about it? I support the motion. Do you want to have a vote in it? All in favor? Carried. I'd like to say the delegation in attendance tonight, we had met. You had asked if I would raise this matter with Noem. I will. We have a meeting in June, and we'll take this motion, and we'll put it on Noem's agenda, and we'll have a discussion there about it, so...
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, so we, can we move to the consent agenda, or do we have to actually wait? We have to wait five minutes? So, Madam...
To question of the eights.
Sure. So, then maybe instead of moving to the consent agenda, we'll, we'll go to another matter on section eight. Madam Clerk?
Under Agenda Item 8.1, Quarterly Reports on Outstanding Motion, a motion by councillors Hoopinen and Shoemaker. Whereas in the past, regular reports on outstanding council resolutions were brought to council for an update on the status of said resolutions. And whereas in this term of council, only one update on outstanding council resolutions has been brought to city council. Now therefore, be it resolved that staff commencing as soon as practicable, bring quarterly reports to council on the status of outstanding resolutions, as well as when they are expected to be completed, and any foreseeable issues that might delay their completion.
Council Hoopinen, would you like to speak to this?
Yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's fairly simple, actually. It sounds a bit more complicating than it is. But the rationale behind this motion that I, that I brought forward is to keep council current on the progress of the resolutions that have been passed. It also allows the councillors easy access. So, if we're approached by a citizen about something that we've talked about in the past, some, some of them are fairly old. So, I think if we have something more up to date, it would be a little bit more easier for us. I don't think the request should be too labor-intensive, because the spreadsheet is done. It's just a matter of updating the spreadsheet and just including it in the agendas, and if there's any questions, it could be asked then. But it just keeps us informed with the status of the resolutions, and it's, it's better for the councillors for them to be able to relay the information if they're asked. That's it. It's pretty simple. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. Anybody else on 8.1? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. 8.2?
Motion by councillors Shoemaker and Christian. Whereas the council agenda often contains requests for street closures, and whereas council has not once this term refused a request for a street closure. And whereas agencies must time their requests for street closures in order to meet the agenda deadline of council. Now therefore, be it resolved that staff review the street closure procedure or policy and determine if requests for street closures can be simplified, streamlined, and expedited.
Council Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to put that we've never refused a request for a street closure, but I could only speak to the time that I've been here. I also noticed that in the downtown development plan that's on the agenda tonight, they ask in there that we streamline our street closure process. So, it's a timely resolution in any event. This is like liquor license extensions, which were up a few weeks ago, just a matter of, you know, sort of streamlining what we do, so that we focus more on the things we need to be focusing on, not on the things that are just, you know, that happen as a matter of course. So, hopefully, this will help eliminate some of the things on our agenda that don't necessarily have to be there, although I think there are times when, when they do need to come, and I suspect a report will detail when those would have to be there.
Okay. Anybody else on 8.2? All in favor? Carried. So, we have a couple minutes to the planning agenda. I think 8.3 might take a little long, because it's a lengthy motion. Why don't we read 8.5? Because that's just a notice. Yep.
8.5 is a notice of motion by councillors Shoemaker and Nero. Whereas the community is facing extreme economic anxiety due to non-payment of taxes by the city's largest employer. And whereas the community has recently learned that continued non-payment of taxes by our largest employer could result in either a dramatic increase in taxes or significant layoffs. And whereas council will need to avoid measures that would exacerbate the pain the community is already feeling. And whereas it is prudent to mitigate some of those measures to the greatest extent possible. Now therefore, be it resolved that the five city departments, being Public Works and Engineering, Emergency Services, Legal, Corporate Services, and Community Development and Enterprise Services, be directed to present to city council 2018 preliminary budgets with a 0% increase over their 2017 approved budgets, including a list of cost-saving options for council to consider in achieving that 0% budget change. And further be it resolved that each city department provide a further list of cost-saving options for council's consideration to achieve a 1% overall reduction from their respective 2017 approved budgets.
Okay. So, I think we can probably move to the content, the planning agenda now? Yep, we're at 5:30?
Under Agenda Item 7.6.1, A217Z, 413, 417, and 421 Old Garden River Road, there's a motion by councillors Nero and Hoopinen that the report of the senior planner dated April 24, 2017 concerning rezoning application A217Z be received, and that council postpone this matter until the May 29, 2017 council meeting.
Mr. McConnell, could you give us just a brief update on what this matter is for the folks that are watching at home?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, this is an application to rezone property in Old Garden River Road to permit the construction of three fourplexes. Council dealt with this matter previously, and it was deferred to allow the developer to have a meeting with the neighbors. There was a meeting held earlier this month on, to that effect. Unfortunately, three of the neighbors were not able to attend, and the developer agreed that he would hold a second meeting with the neighbors, and as, and as such, is requesting that this application be deferred to the May 29th meeting.
Is the applicant with us tonight?
The applicant is not here, but he has indicated his agreement.
Okay. Is there anybody here that is here to speak against a deferral or the application in general? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Motion's carried, 7.6.1. So, move on to 7.6.2?
Agenda item 7.6.2 is A617Z OP, 677 McDonald Avenue. There is a motion by councillors Nero and Shoemaker, resolved that the report of the senior planner dated April 24, 2017 be received, and that council deny the applicant's request to amend the official plan and rezone the subject property from M2S274 Medium Industrial Zone with a special exemption to M2S274 Medium Industrial Zone with an amended special exception to increase the allowable commercial occupancy of the existing building from 40% gross floor area to 100% gross floor area.
Mr. McConnell, can you speak to this, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think council is familiar with this property. It fronts on McDonald Avenue and is directly behind the Black Road Timber Mart Store. Staff is recommending that the application be denied. As the deputy city clerk read the request, it is to permit 100% of the building to be used for general commercial purposes. I think some history would be helpful. This building was originally constructed as an industrial plaza, and in four different times since it was constructed, council has dealt with rezonings to add additional uses to the property. As it sits now, in addition to all of the light industrial uses and all of the medium industrial uses, 100% of the building can be used for general office space, and 40% of the building can be occupied by any other commercial use. The applicant has now requested that that 40% be amended to 100%. In other words, creating a new commercial area in town. The emphasis of the official plan is to maintain the existing commercial areas that we have, and we still have a fair number of vacancies elsewhere in the community. Therefore, staff are recommending against that. Further, I think approving this application to allow 100% commercial uses in industrial areas would set a difficult precedent, in that there are many other properties in town with similar industrial zoning that would reasonably feel that they also would want to enjoy complete commercial zoning. Hence, the recommendation from council to deny. Mr. Lepore is in attendance tonight on behalf of the applicant.
Welcome to council, Mr. Lepore.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, the application is being recommended to be denied by city staff. However, I'd like to provide council with some background as to my client's position. Much of council is probably familiar with Mr. LG. He's been a contractor, developer, and a property manager in Sioux St. Marie since approximately 1975. He's had much experience with the marketing of various types of commercial buildings around town, and he's certainly knowledgeable of the current and probably future trends of the real estate market in Sioux St. Marie. The official plan is, is an official plan from 1996. Even then, there currently exists some contradictions in that plan. Part six of the plan provides that the physical development of the community must respond to economic, social, and natural environment challenges and opportunities. Having a vacant commercial space or a vacant industrial/commercial space in Sioux St. Marie currently is a challenge, as is any vacant space. Allowing the applicant more flexibility is not to suggest that he's intending to take occupied space from the downtown, for example, and place it at 677 McDonald Avenue. It's to allow a tenant an opportunity to locate in an area which the tenant wishes to locate, and that's precisely the problem facing here. Council's attempting to, and I do recognize the plan. What I'm suggesting is that council's not really allowing the flexibility that's necessary. The staff report indicates that the current zoning is currently flexible and permissive. Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, if it was flexible and permissive, my client would not have been here so many times to, to seek council's approval to have the property rezoned. And I wouldn't want to suggest that my client has been attempting over the years to simply get the zoning more and more permissive. There've been various issues as to deadlines and timelines, as to why concessions may have been made in the past, as to why the zoning was agreed to by my client, but it still was not permissive enough. My client has had opportunities in the past where tenants have refused to simply locate there because the zoning was not permissive, and due to timelines, if you're a landlord, you're not going to really be in a great position to tell a prospective tenant, "Well, hold on a second. If you wait a few months, I'll go get a rezoning, and, and you can see me later." The tenant may decide simply to leave or abandon the future development. The tenant may decide simply to leave or abandon the future development. I would encourage council to give my client the tools necessary to spur development in this particular location. We're concerned about existing vacant space. So is my client. My client manages and owns various properties in the downtown and elsewhere. What the problem is, is that council is trying to indicate that the market has no say in terms of where tenants are to locate. If a tenant does not want to locate in the downtown, there may be a reason for that. There may be simply a financial impediment. It may be that the market conditions in the downtown are not where the particular tenant wants to locate. I will advise council, and many councils are probably aware, that this particular property is in a bit of a unique location. There are various different uses surrounding the property. There's a building supply store. There's an auto parts retailer nearby. Importantly, there's a residential apartment building just in the rear. Conceivably, there are uses, commercial uses, that would be better suited to fit with that surrounding area. Their transit, Sault Ste. Marie Transit, I believe, has a bus stop very close by. No analysis has been done in the staff report as to the existing surrounding areas and ways in which permitting commercial development may be supportive of those surrounding areas. There was some mention also in the planning report in terms of affecting adversely the vibrant downtown. The market will indicate to some degree where businesses wish to be located, if anywhere at all. There may be vacant space in the downtown, and I've mentioned this previously. There may be vacant space in the downtown. The tenant may simply not wish to be in downtown Sault Ste. Marie. It may be wished to be located at 677 McDonald Avenue. For council to indicate to that particular person, no, we're not open for business. We're not going to allow you to locate there because of a fairly antiquated official plan. I think council should seriously consider whether or not that is sound reasoning. Some other considerations. The official plan does provide, there is a goal to encourage the reuse, rehabilitation, and redevelopment of the existing built environment, and this is what this building is. My client's not intending to increase the square footage of the building or to build a new building. He simply wants to allow his current building to be used. It is currently, part of it is vacant. He would like it occupied, as many people would. Discouragement is a word used in the official plan. Discouragement of new commercial development on lands not properly zoned. It's not a prohibition. This situation, I would submit to council, is one in which council should not discourage the rezoning of the property. It's already, I would say, in a sense, it's permissive. It's not permissive enough. We are not attempting to zone the property from a residential area to an industrial area. We're not attempting to create a commercial use which did not exist. We're attempting to allow flexibility that if it already exists to some degree, it should exist to a degree which my client can actually use that flexibility to his benefit. If there are any questions, I would be pleased to address those questions.
Okay. Before, do we have anybody here to speak against the application? Seeing none, we'll start with Counselor Tom Myers, who had her hand out, then Counselor Shoemaker, then Counselor Mano.
Questions first, Mr. Mayor, and then comments, or do both together?
Just questions.
Okay. Well, really, I just have one question, then I have a few comments I'd like to make. The question would be through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Lepore. Is the general commercial use unrestricted as to the percentage that you're seeking? Activities such that would impact any quality of life to the residents nearby, i.e. noise, anything like that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Myers. I don't see that it would impact to any greater degree than a current industrial use would impact. Allowing an industrial use and not allowing a commercial use because of the residential area seems to me to be completely contradictory. So in that regard, I mean, part of the problem is, you know, suppose we don't know what the future development would be, but forty percent is allowed commercial area. Hundred percent of commercial area, I don't see being any more of an impact than a current unrestricted medium industrial zone.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is the forty percent commercial that's currently allowed, is it occupied?
About half of that is currently occupied, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the Director of Planning. Mr. McConnell, how would this, allowing this, if we were to not follow the staff's recommendation, how would it be any different than what we did just down the road at the old Rolarama?
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Shoemaker. The old Rolarama there, which council rezoned to permit office uses, is, was commercial to start with, and it is in the middle of a commercial area. Here, what we're talking about is what's actually an industrial area. By right, we do recognize that some commercial uses are appropriate within industrial areas, and other industrial areas also have, it's through the definition of an industrial plaza, you can have up to thirty percent of space in other industrial areas used for commercial purposes. In this particular case, there was a special put on to make that forty percent, but not the hundred percent is not being recommended because this is quite distinct and separate from the Trump Road commercial areas. And again, the emphasis, in staff's opinion, should be on maintaining the viability and health of our existing commercial areas, not just the downtown, but other commercial areas throughout the community, rather than creating new commercial areas.
Okay. And is, I guess, you know, a point Mr. Lepore made, and that I'd ask you to perhaps give your thoughts on, if possible, is what if, you know, this size and scale of a building is, you know, is what a prospective tenant would want, or a commercial user would want? I mean, that's not, that doesn't seem to me to be sort of readily available in the downtown, certainly, perhaps on Trump Road, but is it, you know, is it not something that?
Again, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Shoemaker, it is possible that someone would want to come in and take the entire building. That would create forty thousand square feet of commercial space, which is a lot of commercial space. As a matter of fact, that's just the trigger in the city's official plan to require a retail impact study. This is just below that trigger. In our recommendation to council, again, what we would be doing is creating a new commercial space in the community rather than supporting our existing commercial areas.
Okay. And what about the use next to it? I know there's Timber Mart next to it. Is that not a commercial use?
The Timber Mart building is, actually, that's an industrial zoning, and that's classed as a building and hardware and garden supply center, which is permitted in the M2 medium industrial zones throughout the community. So that is an industrial use, yes.
So that type of use would be permissible?
Right, yeah, okay. That was the next question. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay. We have Counselor Mano next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to firstly, Mr. Lepore. So one of my first questions, our mayor has already asked you. In light of your client only having forty percent, sorry, of the forty percent current permitted use of commercial space, you've indicated that only half of that is actually occupied. So what is the, rephrase for a moment here. If half is only commercial at this stage, why do you want a hundred percent? Like, are there other irons in the fire we're unaware of or we're not being told of? Is there some, somebody who wants it? Is there, has there been a lot of interest that, you know, your client has had to turn people away because, and I appreciate your comment that you want to have the option, or he would like to have the option, because it's too time sensitive to have to come to council to say, hey, I've got a fish on the line right now, and it's going to take too long for me to be able to get that approval through council, and that prospective tenant will go elsewhere by then. But if you can give us some more appreciations too, if you can't use the forty percent, you're only halfway there, why go for a hundred?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Mano. Counselor Mano, I can advise that there has been an interested party, and that interested party has been, my client had to turn down that interested party. It's not so much that, you know, why is half of it commercial, you know, of the occupied space and it's not currently occupied. It's fitness for use. If a particular space would be fit for a particular tenant, that's why the tenant is going to go to that space. It's not necessarily, oh, we're going to go to Sault Ste. Marie, let's find, you know, eighteen thousand square feet. No. If it doesn't make sense where that eighteen thousand square feet is located, and that particular tenant has no other interest of being anywhere else, I don't see why they would decide to locate here, if that's the scenario. I mean, there could be various other scenarios. If the space is not available at the outset, my client's not going to be able to market it, period. And interested parties who have come to my client recently have been turned away.
So in essence, then, what you're saying is, your client would like to have the option of drawing from a full deck as opposed to forty percent of a deck?
I suppose yes. I mean, if you're allowing my client to use forty percent of the building for commercial spaces, and all the other, you know, don't allow him to use the other sixty percent, because, you know, it's contrary to a part of the official plan, not recognizing some of the other parts which allow for the redevelopment of existing areas. I think it's really not equitable to my client, who's the landlord, who's trying to spur the development, to say, no, no, you know, don't even bother. Don't even bother. If you can find some commercial space, tell them to go to somewhere else. Yeah, he does want the flexibility to manage his business the best way he thinks fit, so that existing vacant space is occupied. The space is currently vacant. We're trying to remedy the issue of existing vacant space. Are we trying to say that vacant commercial space is worse than vacant industrial commercial space? I think vacant space, period, is a problem in Sault Ste. Marie. And if my client's trying to remedy that problem, I think he should be given the tools to do so.
Does any part of this have anything to do with the tax implications of it being large industrial being taxed at a higher bracket than the commercial space would be?
It might, but I really do think it depends on the tenant.
It wouldn't be large industrial?
Well, sorry.
It's not that.
Still a higher rate from industrial.
They're not the same rates, yeah.
All right. Now, a few questions for Mr. McConnell. I appreciate the rationale that you've provided us with. Isn't there, is there something more specific, though, in regard to, I mean, quite frankly, I think Mr. Lepore makes a pretty compelling argument. We have a lot of vacant areas in the community. We are in a very significant struggle as a community. Should we not be providing the tools as a council to our residents and our business owners to be able to, as I said earlier, draw from a full deck as opposed to, let's say, forty percent of a deck? Is there something beyond that? I can appreciate that, yeah, we're creating a new commercial area, but really, is there some reason why that's a problem? It's an industrial area. You've got the Timber Mart there. It has a large footprint. I'm trying to balance why it would matter that we would have commercial space there as opposed to just industrial.
Mr. Mayor, through you to Counselor Mano. The big picture, if we stay with the big picture on this, and we look at what is that we want to do? We want to have healthy commercial areas throughout the community. It's not just the downtown. But we did start, I mean, to use the downtown as an example, we undertook a very aggressive downtown improvement program about eight years ago, and the reason for that was we saw properties being sold in the downtown far below market value, and that's a big portion of the taxes that are paid to this community. And if you have healthy commercial areas that are vibrant, that are mostly leased, no commercial area is ever going to be totally leased, then that creates high market values for us in those areas, and it creates a good source of tax revenue. There's nothing wrong with expanding the commercial areas in town and developing new commercial areas in town, but you want to do that in a situation where, without damaging your existing commercial areas. And I think if we start saying we're going to take industrial land, which already has a strong commercial component to it, in the sense that you can have commercial uses mixed in there, and we make the whole thing commercial, we're going to see this happening again and again throughout the community, and that's going to really weaken our existing commercial areas. From a big picture perspective, we want to maintain the zoning that we have. And I point out that they can put a hun, they can use a hundred percent of that use of that building for office uses. They can use forty percent of that building right now for any other commercial use, which is better than any other industrial zone in town.
Thank you. Is there a mechanism in which we could speed the process up or create an exemption whereby if there's somebody who wants it for commercial purposes, we don't have this impediment in place, so that we sort of try to satisfy both ends here? Is there some kind of a happy medium, I guess?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're very aware of that. The process for rezoning is set out provincially in the Planning Act, and in the regulations, it requires certain public notice. We're very tight to the legislation, in the sense that from the time someone walks in the door and files an application, they are heard by council within six weeks. I don't know of any other municipality that does better than that. Most do far worse. For us to shorten that down is not realistic. Well, it's not realistic. It would not be permitted by the legislation.
We do it as quick as we can.
Yeah. Okay. And I will try to finish this off as quick as I can. Last question, and perhaps to Michelle. Is there a tax implication? Does that change things? By us going, if we were to agree to go a hundred percent commercial use, there's a slight difference between the two brackets. At this point, being vacant, I guess it's neither here nor there, but...
The zoning and the assessment are, do not appear the same. They're actually taxed based as commercial and shopping center, so they're not taxed as industrial. Unless there was an industrial client in there, I don't think it would be taxed as industrial.
So then, no. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions. I'll have some comments.
Counselor Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. McConnell answered one of my questions, just a follow-up to, with Mr. McConnell. Do we have any idea, percentage-wise or number, real numbers-wise, how much vacant commercial property we currently have in Sault Ste. Marie? Do we have any idea?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, yes, we do. I don't have that number right with me at the moment, but the city does issue vacancy tax credits, or vacancy tax rebate for commercial properties back to those owners who've had property or a portion of a property sit vacant for three or more months. And on average, that costs us about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. Perhaps Michelle can correct me if my numbers are off here, but that, we do have a detailed listing of those properties that are applying for that credit.
Well, then, that, now, follow up on that, then. If we were to go against your recommendations and zone it all commercial, and at some point, it's not filled, does it change the current situation as far as getting that rebate, or because it's the way it's structured now, they're entitled to the rebate as well, simply because part of it isn't rented?
Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian, I'm not sure of the answer to that question. Perhaps Michelle could help us with that?
So, Mr. McConnell mentioned that, you know, tax rebate notices went out to certain vacant commercial properties. I'm just wondering, in a situation like this, would this property qualify for the vacancy rebates if we allowed one hundred percent commercial zoning, or does it change at all? They may currently already have vacancy in there, and they would qualify for it. They may currently already have vacancy in there, and they would qualify for it anyway? Does this, does the, if we rezoned it, or if we accepted the request, would that qualify them for rebates in the future?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Christian. Based on what I saw as the assessment on here, it wouldn't make any difference. They're not being assessed as industrial, and industrial does qualify for the vacancy rebate. So, in short, no, it makes no difference.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, so no additional questions, we'll, I guess, I had one before we get to comments. So it seems that a big concern of planning's, one which I would share, is that if this is, if staff's recommendation's not supported and the application is approved, we could create a precedent. Now, is that a precedent that can be relied upon at the O M B for similar type of applications?
Mr. Mayor, I've been to the O M B, and I've seen a variety of decisions. I don't think there's a concrete answer to that. I do think what may happen is other people who own similar industrial properties around town would want to enjoy the same benefit of being able to say, oh, my property's now all commercial as well. And I would expect we'd get a flood of applications, perhaps not a flood, I suspect we would get some similar applications from other properties. Their success at the O M B, we'd have to go to the O M B in order to determine that.
Okay. So we'll take comments. We have Counselor Myers first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I will say upfront that I am not going to support the staff recommendation. And I think I'll start just at the last comment that the director made for my platform of my remarks, because who cares? If they all come forward and they know what will occupy their empty spaces, who cares? So my point is that we need to support, we've talked and talked and talked in my eleven years on this council about creating barriers and red tape and all kinds of things for business and wanting to lift those. Quite frankly, there's nobody better than our own business people who know what is good for their business. And I think the more we can get out of their way, the better. We're not Chicago, we're not Toronto, we're a small town. There is already a commercial area that's nearby, it was raised by one of my co-counselors here, the former roller rink. It's only a stone's throw away. This is not creating a new commercial space, this is expanding an existing commercial space. That's the request before us. Mr. Elgie has seen the ebbs and flows of our local economy. He's been a business leader and a contributor in this community for many, many, many years. He knows what he needs to do to be successful in his business, and that's what he's here asking us for this evening. We're open for business, and we can't talk out of both sides of our mouths. So for me, it's a very clear issue in front of us. We talk about cutting red tape and being open as possible, and then we sit here and debate about whether we're gonna not respond to the request of one of our business investors. So the general commercial use that is there now is restricted by a percentage. What they're asking for is it simply be unrestricted. I don't think this is a massive request here. And if there's a precedent, quite frankly, I don't care. I hope that we have many others who see business opportunity, want to come forward and have their business open opportunities. So, Mr. Mayor, I do not support the staff recommendation. I think we have got to, in this economy more than ever, be as open as possible with our business investors who know what they need to do in this community for success. It was said that we still have vacancies in other parts of town. Well, guess what? He has vacancies in his part of town. That's why he's here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, those are my comments.
Counselor Mano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to echo and repeat a lot of what Counselor Myers has said, but I'm going to agree with her position. I think we have another resolution before us today, or another report before us with respect to our industrial assessment, and we know that that's down. There's a lack of industrial growth in our community. If I'm sitting in the shoes of this particular business owner who has been a longtime person contributing to our local business economy, I would be worried, looking at things like that very other report we have before us as a council. And I'd be saying, a lot of what he's saying before us today makes a lot of sense. Please don't handcuff me, please don't restrict me in how I want to use my property. I think Mr. Lepore's made some very good arguments. You've got a couple of apartment buildings in the area, you've got the timber mart next door. Imagine you're a contractor, imagine you're a plumber, an electrician, or someone in those trades, that can really understand why you might want to have an office space in the building next door. In light of also what both Counselor Shoemaker and Counselor Myers have raised, you have a stone's throw away commercial space already. I fully appreciate council's reason, I'm sorry, staff's reason for the recommendation. I think it does make sense. The problem is, you know, the comment is made six weeks. Six weeks is a lot quicker turnaround time than most other municipalities, but six weeks isn't be good, isn't anywhere near good enough. If I'm ready to rent a place, a commercial establishment, and I'm ready today, I'm not gonna wait six weeks for you to get council's approval and have that uncertainty looming overhead as to what's gonna occur and what do I do in the intervening six weeks? So that's just not gonna be good enough for those prospective tenants, and that's not gonna be good enough for the obvious business owner or property owner. It comes down to, again, our message is, the message that we're being asked right now by staff is to stay the course. And I can appreciate why we're being asked to stay the course, but right now, we're in a situation where we have too many trials and tribulations that we're dealing with as a community. And I think what we need to be saying to our community right now is we are open for business, and we are prepared to stray outside of the lines here to facilitate a very friendly environment for our businesses to thrive. And I think that's, I go back to that comment I made earlier. I don't want to have to see our businesses draw from half of the pool. I think we need to give them the opportunity. And Mayor, I like the comment or the question you asked, and I was of the opinion myself that this is a case-by-case analysis. We get to evaluating everything as it comes before us. This doesn't just create a blanket precedent whereby anybody in the same situation. To me, the reason why I would support this particular location is for those three reasons. Number one, you've got a commercial space just down the road. Number two, the timber mart being right there, I think, creates a good opportunity for commercial space in that location and that apartment building being right there. To me, those three reasons justify this particular location being zoned commercially. And maybe on another application, that would differ. Those are my comments.
Any additional comments? Counselor Shoemaker?
A procedural question. If we vote this down, what happens?
So, I've been thinking through that, judging on the conversation. So the staff recommendation fails, but I think we would still need a motion to approve the application. Go to Mr. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If that's the council, if that's the direction that council wants to go, I'd ask that they approve it in principle. There is an official plan amendment required for this. We did give notice of that as part of the original application, and staff would have to prepare that, and we could bring it back for the next meeting.
So, so, well, we have to deal with the motion in front of us. So if this is, if this is lost, then it would go back to staff. Staff would return at the next meeting with a new motion that would, obviously, with some specific language, approve the application. So there are just a few comments I want to make, not to argue the point one way or the other, but just to clarify a few things. No one here is putting restrictions on the way that the property can be used. Those restrictions exist, and they existed before this meeting. So nobody's telling, in any case, a property owner how they can and can't use their property. When a property owner buys a piece of property, that property owner buys that property with certain uses that are permitted. So this isn't a matter of this council not being open for business or not being flexible. This property was purchased with certain uses. It's been here a number of times where the, those uses were, frankly, changed and increased. So I have a bit of a problem with the equitable argument, saying it's not fair to do this because it isn't a matter of equity. It's a matter of actually law. Piece of property's purchased, you know what the zoning is, you buy the property with that zoning in mind. You know, I think we do have to be careful because we have an official plan. So I think we have to be careful to recognize that if we're gonna deviate from the official plan, like Counselor Mano mentions, it's for specific reasons. I think we have to be very careful to say, I don't care, I hope more people come and ask for this. I think that will create a difficult kind of climate in council, and then you're in a position where you can have a lot of property that's zoned a certain way for a certain reason flipping changes. And then we really have no control over what's going on in the city and the zones that's happening. So I just wanted to kind of be clear about those points. Zoning exists, and it's prescribed, and the owners of property know what their zoning is when they buy the property. So we have the motion before us, everybody's familiar with the motion. The motion is to reject the application, that's summarizing. All in favor of that? Okay? All opposed to the motion? So the motion, staff motion dies. Now, does staff need a motion directing them to return in two weeks with a, Dawn, why don't you tell us what you need, and we'll move that?
I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, that council simply pass a resolution to approve the application in principle on the basis that it's understood that staff will prepare the official plan amendment and come back for the next meeting.
So Counselor Myers moves that, Counselor Shoemaker seconds that. All in favor? Carry, there we go. Okay, so you'll be back before us, I guess, in a couple of weeks, Mr. Lepore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council.
Take care. Madam Clerk, we can move on.
On the consent agenda, we have a motion by Councilors Nero and Hoopanen, resolved that all items listed under date April 24, 2017, Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda, be approved as recommended. And I would just point out, on Agenda Item 6.14, Resurfacing of City Streets, there was a typographical error in the report that's corrected on your electronic copy. On the Class C, it had York Street from north to Elmwood. In fact, it's York Street from north to John.
Counselor Christian was just first with his hand up here, so we'll start with you, Counselor Christian. Give the honors.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.12 Downtown Development.
6.12?
Yep. This question is to Mr. Vare. I read the report, and we, as council, we've all been aware of the process that we're following. Mike, I have a question, and then I'd like to follow it up with a comment, if I could. But my question is this. Has the group that's in charge of the downtown development or redevelopment, has there been any discussion about trying to create sort of an overarching theme or identity for the downtown beyond the simple redevelopment of the downtown and all the initiatives that have been addressed in the report? Is there, is there any thought to an overall arching theme or focus for the downtown?
Mr. Vare?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I'm actually gonna refer that to Don McConnell, our planning director. That's okay?
Mr. McConnell.
With regards to an overall theme, there has been a beginnings on that. When we first met with the Downtown Association, they talked about making it a neighborhood, and what are the characteristics of that neighborhood that they would like to see. But from a marketing viewpoint, it does make sense, they have a really strong theme. We see other communities that have that, and that really helps, I think, to kind of drive interest in the downtown. That is something that probably should be undertaken in cooperation with the Downtown Business Association, rather than a standalone initiative of the city.
Okay, just, might Mr. Acting Mayor have a comment I'd like to make regarding the downtown development report?
Should we, is there any others with any questions first? Counselor Bruni.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. Regarding the sale of the May Court daycare, and the proceeds will go to the Community Development Fund Reserve, shouldn't this be an issue during budget deliberations? The money should be transferred, and maybe the C E O can comment on this.
Mr. Harsman?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. I will look to the CFO to describe the reserves, but if you recall, as part of the 2017 budget deliberations, council did direct staff to find six hundred thousand dollars to be able to fund this initiative over three years, two hundred thousand in each of three years. This is the avenue through which staff has complied with that direction of council. I'd love to, Ms. Michelle, to explain further.
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. When properties owned by the city are sold, usually the reserve, the reserve that it goes to is a property purchase reserve fund, the net proceeds will go into that, and the use of that reserve fund is to be used to purchase other properties the city may need. In this case, there's three properties that the city will be putting up for sale in the near future, one being May Court, which is already sold, the other being the Steelton Senior Center, and then the last being Jesse Irving. And staff is recommending that those properties be readdressed to the downtown development, put in a separate reserve fund, just so that they're held until they're required for the three-year plan. And hopefully, this will help alleviate some of the funding required for the downtown development. This also takes it away from adding an additional amount to the levy, which council didn't want to do at budget time.
There's no grant money that we can apply for. I guess question to Mr. C E O.
Mr. Harsman?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, to Counselor Bruni. We are, of course, always actively looking for grant programs. We have not identified any to date in terms of the six hundred thousand, but this six hundred thousand does leverage for us from other orders of government, a significant more, which is also described in the report.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? If not, back to Counselor Christian for comments.
Mayor, I posed that question earlier because I just want to start off by applauding all of the people that have done the work on this project. I think all of council appreciates the importance of it. But I for one have advocated from the beginning that there needs to be an overriding theme, a hook, a way to market the downtown, not just to outsiders, but for ourselves as well. It seems to me there needs to be something that everybody could relate to when it comes to downtown, and I think we have a great opportunity that we're missing. And that is the fact that we have a very, very unique history in Sault Ste. Marie. This city is very steeped in history. I mean, you go back centuries, Etchambrouil, I mean, you know, used the area to explore the interior of Canada. It was a staging area for the fur trade. You know, the Wolsey Expedition, where they couldn't get through the American locks, and so they had to build the Canadian locks in order to allow frontiersmen to travel to interior Canada. Yjibwe Nation, seven thousand years B.C., there's artifacts dating back that far. The Anishnabi people used the rapids, you know, for a gathering place, it's an important fishing area. All that history is, we're steeped in that history, and I think we're missing the opportunity. It seems to me that we should use the downtown, we're steps away from a very historic area, namely, the Saint Mary's River and the rapids, and yet we're not capitalizing on it. So I think the idea of developing the downtown core is good, but I think we need to theme it. I think we're missing an opportunity. And I think, without getting the senior levels of government to designate the property or the downtown as an official heritage location to restrict us, I would think that at least pursuing those avenues for additional funding from senior levels of government to help us develop and promote the downtown area would go a long way. You know, it'd give us a true sense of identity, it would help us market it to visitors, and at the very least, it'll help us celebrate our own history. We want to start taking a lot more pride in this community. I think that would be a great way to start. I mean, I could see historic markers and information displayed downtown. I think that could all be part of the package, and we can all sit back and celebrate and use it as a gathering place for local residents and visitors alike. So I just encourage the people that are working on this project to continue what you're doing, but I really do think that we need to do a better job of marketing it to ourselves and to the rest of the world. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Counselor Christian, Counselor Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor. I was, I actually just stepped out when the questions were going around, so... I was actually just stepped out when the questions were going around, so I do have a couple of questions.
Back to questions.
Thank you. Through you to Mr. Vare or Mr. Elliott. The two-way, one-way, complete streets evaluation, what will that encompass?
Mr. Acting Mayor to councillor Shoemaker, I think the primary purpose of the downtown traffic study is to answer the one-way versus two-way question.
Which streets, I guess, will that encompass?
Well, there are essentially four one-way pairs: Bay Queen, Albert Wellington, Church Pym, and Gore Andrew are the four pairs. Cathcart's in that mix, too.
So all those, as part of this one-way, two-way, complete streets evaluation, will be included and looked at?
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, is to put all four pairs in the terms of reference.
Oh, okay. I guess that raises another question. You'll be coming back to us with an EA recommendation?
Mr. Acting Mayor to councillor Shoemaker, yes. If this is approved tonight, we would proceed to go through the procurement process to identify a consultant to do the study, and that would come back to you.
Okay, that's excellent. Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor, I think the director of planning, probably. In the past, we've given not just facade upgrade grants, but upgrades for interior portions of buildings. I can think of renovations to furnaces and things that have previously been approved. Are any of those included in this lengthy list of proposed expenditures?
Mr. McConnell?
Through you, Mr. Acting Mayor to councillor Shoemaker. What we've done is we've really scoped down the extent of what would be covered as far as eligible expenses for the grant program. I must say upfront that the way the grant program works is that the building owner has to put more money in than we do, and he has to pay all the bills and then demonstrate that they've all been paid before the city will consider the rebate or will issue a rebate. There is one program that was carried over from our previous program, the facade improvement grant. That is still there. We will make a number of building improvements. There's a... We've modified our original building improvement grant to restrict it to vacant buildings or vacant spaces within buildings, rather than simply helping people with the cost of upgrading their building. We really wanted to focus on those vacant spaces. And the other thing we've done is we've created a grant that is specific to converting vacant space to residential use on second floors. So it is a lot more targeted than the previous program was.
So mostly no, but not completely no, is what I'm hearing.
Mostly yes, but not completely. We would be willing to pay for building upgrades where someone's converting a vacant space to a residential apartment, or where someone's simply upgrading a vacant space to make it loable.
Okay, that makes some sense. I'll hop back to comments, Mr. Acting Mayor, soon to be Mr. Mayor. And I mean that because the actual mayor's behind you. A good plan, I think it's well reasoned, and there's lots of projects in here that, you know, if they come to fruition, if they achieve their full potential, I think can really help enhance our downtown. So hopefully, we see some progress.
Thank you. So we have councillor Bruni next on the list?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question, again, back to Mr. McConnell regarding... or Mr. Elliott regarding the two-way, one-way, complete streets evaluation. Has that ever occurred on Queen Street and Bay Street in the past? Have we ever had a study on that six years ago, seven years ago?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Bruni, no. I don't believe that's been studied in the recent past.
It has never been studied?
I don't know that it's been... I've been here 20 years, and it hasn't been studied within that period of time.
No, okay, thank you.
Is that it, councillor Bruni?
That's it.
Councillor Mano? On the same issue, correct?
Yes.
6.12?
Yes, with respect to the downtown.
Yep.
I just wanted to add that the Downtown Association, I'm always going to clearly wear that hat again as a council member on that board, through our strategic plan this year, has incorporated a lot of what is being proposed here, what's being suggested, especially a lot of the comments from councillor Christian. So I don't want to repeat all those again. I will say, I was trying to flag you with a little card here when you were talking about the rich history. You know, you were definitely on a roll, sir, but I wanted to say, in the words of Mr. Sheehan in his then role as councillor, I'd be remiss not to say... Also, let's not forget, another piece of rich history being the Bush Plain Museum, which marks the inception or the start of the Ministry of Natural Resources under a different name, of course. But the original water bombers all servicing all of the Ontario area out of this region. So certainly, we do have so much rich history, and maybe there is another avenue there for funding as well. But I wanted to also thank staff for the work. We put out a request, come up with some funds to do this, and you've come to the table with a plan that works, and so, thank you.
Anybody else on 6.12? I'd just like to recognize, I think, the great work of the Planning Department and planning staff. I thought it was a great report, and I think we're doing some positive things and moving in a positive direction. So thank you very much for that. Councillor Christian, we're still with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 6.17 Connecting Links, a question through you to Mr. Elliott. Mr. Elliott, thank you for the report. When I read the report, I get the sense, and correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like the ministry has conceded that our request to widen Black Road would qualify for future requests, but there's no guarantee that it will actually receive funding for the widening. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Christian, yeah, that is accurate. The project, we understand, is now eligible, and we're going to get that, try to get that in writing from the ministry. It's eligible for funding, but we need to get in line with other projects across the province. So it may be that we apply next year for funding for Black Road. We may not get it because the province has other connecting link priorities that they deem more critical than that project in Sault Ste. Marie.
So despite the fact that Sudbury, they've spent multimillion dollars to bypass Sudbury and multimillion dollars to bypass Thunder Bay, essentially, we're sitting in line waiting to see if we can get 1,000 yards of roadway widening. Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor to councillor Christian, we continue to advocate for a bypass, or at least an environmental assessment and route planning for a bypass and/or a connection of Highway 17 to Black Road at second line. That's kind of a separate issue. We remain... We have the longest connecting link in the province, and as you all know, Black Road is a priority for widening, but we are also losing other surfaces. We're losing Front Road at the east end of town. It's falling apart, so it's going to need a surface within the next couple of years as well, so.
I find it unusual that, you know, all of a sudden now we've qualified for this project, whereas prior to my resolution, there was nothing. So you can make the connection. And secondly, I can't help but feel that... And I don't want to accuse them, but I just feel that... I feel like we're being appeased somewhat, and I'm looking forward to them actually approving the widening at some point. Thank you.
Anybody else on that matter? Seeing none, councillor Christian, do you have any other matters?
Nope, that's it, sir.
Okay, councillor Mano?
6.2, please.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm on. Sorry, I didn't realize that.
So I think councillor Compaugh and councillor Shoemaker declared conflicts on this one.
Thank you. I just have some comments. If that's fine? Thank you. I've beat this drum far too many times, and I'm going to beat it again. I think that our motion, number one, in response with respect to the motion that was brought by the port, I think was appropriate under the circumstances. So I may be singing a different tune than I have in the past with respect to that. I think it was appropriate under the circumstances, but here's my difficulty. I feel that we continue to go down this road with how we handle these budget amounts that we put in place for our lawyers on this restructuring process, and I don't know why we're doing it in such a fashion. In the world that we live in, and, you know, being a lawyer, we live in a... And anybody who's ever dealt with a lawyer knows, you go see a lawyer, you ask for an opinion on a certain subject matter, the lawyer gives you an opinion, he or she provides you with a number and says, "This is what it will cost, and here's my opinion as to whether you will have success or failure with this idea of yours," or this plan you wish to go forward with. And then if you want to do what it is that you've asked, you pay the required fee and proceed to give those instructions to your lawyer. If I'm the law firm on... If I am our lawyer here at the city, and we just keep on saying, "Okay, we approve you for..." We approve... Council approves the amount of 100 and some odd thousand, and then we approve 50,000, and then we approve 50,000, and then we approve $100,000. They've never provided us an opinion. They've never given us a quote as to what something is going to cost. I would like, or at least it's not been reported to us as a council, I would like to see us operate on the basis of, let us have an opinion, let us be quoted a figure, let us, obviously, in closed session discuss, and then come to open and agree. Let's spend this much money. But to continually just set these upside limits of what can be spent. We spent 275,000, now we're going to be looking at spending another 100,000? I just imagine you're the law firm, sitting there saying, "Okay, well, that council just keeps on setting these upside limits and keeps on saying they can spend, you know, they're allowed to spend X number of dollars, and it's not coming to us to determine what are we getting for our investment." So I would really like to see us get an opinion, be told a number, and decide whether we want to go ahead and spend that money, as opposed to just having these blanket numbers there. But I agree with what we've done in this most recent past. I think we're taking a proper approach. I just want to know what it's going to cost to, for instance, bring this particular motion and have some information as to what the chances of success or failure of it are, and make a decision moving forward from that. I just, I don't like setting these continually approving budgets for service that we don't know what the cost is going to be and what the potential results are going to be. I've never... It just baffles me that we're doing it in this particular fashion. And again, I've made other arguments in the past, I won't repeat those.
Is there a question, councillor Mano?
No, I said, I just had comments on it.
Okay.
So those are my comments.
Does anybody have a question on this matter, councillor Bruni?
No, I have comments, but do we have a quorum here?
Well, we're not...
I have not, no.
No, we don't. We have one too many councillors leave. That doesn't prevent us from making a comment, it just prevents us from taking an action. We can't vote on anything. Go ahead.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we're in this mess, and I do agree with councillor Romano, but I feel more confident when we have representation at the table. If presently we're owed $28 million, another $100,000 is required to have a legal team present in the court system. I think it's important. I don't know exactly what councillor Romano would like to see or present it to the councillors, but we need to spend the money, because I'm awfully scared that we're not going to receive some of our tax dollars from SR. And I think spending the $100,000 is appropriate right now. And of course, something like this, who gets rich? It's the lawyers. Note, all due respect to the lawyers we have on council, but this is what's happening. The lawyers are getting rich over this, and our city's suffering. So we need to spend the $100,000. We need representation at the table. And that's it. Go.
Councillor Butland?
Yeah, so, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Probably the first time in... On this particular issue, and I'm certainly out of my element, but when I read it, I said, "Not again, another 100,000." Is there any lawyer client discussions as to what we're getting, what we hope to get from this? And again, I'm just not sure of myself. But someone told me, Miss Kenny, that you had occasion to go to Toronto for one of the hearings? And if so, how does that relate to this particular item on the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Butland. I can give you as full a response as I am able, and I can tell you that that particular courtroom, which is the Ontario Superior Court, all they deal with is commercial matters. I have... I think you know that I went to law school in Ottawa. I've had the opportunity to be in the Supreme Court of Canada. I've never seen a courtroom like this. There was more council tables than there were audience. It is razor-fast. The lawyers are on their feet like this, and it is... You do have... I appreciate that it is a staggering amount of money that we are paying in legal fees. It's a doubly staggering number that we're owed in taxes. We are extremely conservative in the questions that we put to our lawyers, in the manner in which we frame them. We try and deal with as much in-house as we possibly can. There's weekly meetings between myself, Melanie Finance, the CAO, to discuss what step we should take next, should we put that to the lawyers or not. But in terms of our presence in that courtroom, I can tell you that, in addition to it being so intellectual, it's a very, very academic, it's a very academic, esoteric place to be. And for us to be sitting in the courtroom, like the judge actually made note of our presence in the courtroom, to say, "I appreciate the gravity of the circumstances that are facing the city of Sault Ste. Marie," and he's cleared his schedule to have the motion heard. I don't know that we would have had that response without the presence of actual human beings that were there. He appreciated the efforts, both financially and humanly, that people from the Sioux were actually present to listen to that. It was a very long day, and it was... There was real value in being there. Seeing our lawyers, I can tell you, lawyers are always critical of other lawyers. They're an impressive, very impressive team. They've got... You're paying a lot of money. They've got fantastic infrastructure around them. They're a fantastic law firm, and they were brilliant on their feet.
Very, very helpful answer. Thank you. And is there any move for us to attend further proceedings?
There is, actually, and how exactly that's going to fall out, that's left with the CAO and administration to determine, but the impact of having a team from Sault Ste. Marie present in that courtroom, and the judge taking notice on the record of our presence. This matter was set over... It was set over initially for half an hour, and then two hours, and then upon the date that we were there, they said, "No, we're going to set aside a date." And the judge said on the record, "I'm clearing my schedule. This has got to be heard, and it's got to be heard very quickly."
Just excellent. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to note, just in addition to what the city solicitor said, she said the amount that we're owed is doubly staggering. That's not the case.
No.
The amount that we're owed is 100 times staggering.
[laughing]
So doubly staggering would be 700 grand. Look, I appreciate the nature of the concerns. I don't like having to spend this money either. But it's not the law firm saying to us, "We need you to give us another 100 grand," and now they're authorized to spend 100 grand. It's our staff coming to us, saying, "We need to increase our budget because we've run to the top of it again." I've asked to see some of the bills, and at the very beginning of this matter, we retain this law firm on certain terms and conditions, and they're providing services on those terms and conditions. And their bills are enumerated very specifically as to what they did and when they did it. If any city councillors want to see what our lawyers did and when they did it, you're welcome to attend with administration, and they'll let you see all the bills. I don't like the position we're in, but the reality is, we have a real, I think, significant obligation to stay aggressive and to stay on top of this, and to make it clear to all the participants in the CCA proceeding that we are going to fight for the city's taxes so that we can minimize the detriment to our taxpayer and the pressure on our taxpayer. So it is a difficult number, but relative to what we're looking for, we have to keep that in perspective. As of July, we'll be owed 30 million. So to that point, to have spent 300,000 to try and recover that... to try and recover that, I think is, all things considered, a fairly understandable investment. This will be the end of it, councillor Manon, go ahead.
Yes. Thank you for, I wasn't even going to seek to, to make comments, but now that you've given me the opportunity, I will say, please understand, I am not saying that we shouldn't spend money on this process, that is not what I'm suggesting. What I'm suggesting is, and what I'm, I'm not suggesting it, it's a fact, in this business, the way it operates is, you get an opinion and you're told a number, and then you decide whether or not you want to pay for that service. It does not make sense to me why we would just set a limit as a council.
Councillor Manon, I wouldn't have given you the chance to speak again if you were just going to repeat yourself.
Thank you. I'll, I'll stop, I'm going to ask that this be pulled.
Sure.
From the consent agenda.
Yeah, it can be pulled from the consent agenda. So, we'll pull six-point-one-seven from the consent agenda?
Six-point-two.
Six-point-two? Six-point-two from the consent agenda. Any other matters in the consent agenda, councillor Manon?
None, thank you.
Councillor Butland?
Six-point-one-point-one, back to C.C.A.A. proceedings. And, probably know I've wanted to talk about steel for a couple of years, and we've never really had any debate on it, we've talked more about legal fees. But anyways, I laud the approach that has been taken, it's been a good strategy, and I think everyone down there knows the plight, or the potential disaster. It's almost cataclysmic, if in fact, the worst scenario happens. But, I have to say, I, I suspect others had a rough weekend, no matter where I went, people were saying, I'm not paying twelve to twenty percent more in taxes. And I said to them, you will never pay twelve percent, or fourteen, or sixteen, or eighteen, or twenty, because if they ever do have to pay that amount of taxes, we will be run out of town, and a lot of people will be joining us, simply because people can't afford to pay that much. It is a worst-case scenario, but we've put a lot of people, particular seniors, in a panic mode. They were already anxious, and now they're saying, oh, no, I mean, we just, we just can't do that. So, it, it portrays a very dark, dark picture, but both you and I know that we cannot ever raise taxes that much. We will have to go to the provincial government, we'll have to go to the federal government, we have to borrow, we'll have to do everything we can, but we can't raise the taxes that much and say, we're going to lay off two-hundred people to add to our economic woes that are already there. I don't live with rose-colored glasses, believe me, but I attended a session last week with the chamber, and Mr. Sheehan, and Tenaris was there. They're employing right now four-hundred-and-fifty people, that's from zero, not all that long ago, and hope to employ more. I don't know, there's a couple of buyers for S.R. Steel Algoma, and the lenders are taking full-page ads out, boy, do they provide a very positive picture. They say, we want Algoma, and we're going to invest, reduce the debt by one-point-five-billion, five-hundred-million for new capital, et cetera, et cetera, there's nothing about taxes in here, but there's a buyer here that's eager to go, and I believe the union is backing another buyer. So, we have to say, there will be a steel mill at the end of this exercise. So, without rose-colored glasses, we can't be the purveyors of doom and gloom. And when developers read this, they must say, oof, boy, who would want to go to Sault Ste Marie? So, yeah, it's, it's a, it's a tough time, there's no doubt about it, but we got to go easy on the doom and gloom, and futures at stake, and to portray S.R. Algoma as villains, you do that as you will, but there's, there are twenty-eight-hundred employees and their families at risk here. We have to back them. I don't know which horse to back, but I guess that's not our, our, our right, or I'd like to be more involved, it's almost like we're on the outside looking in. But, again, I repeat, people, we will never, ever raise your taxes twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, or twenty percent. We simply cannot do that, we understand that completely, and this community has been through three or four of these, and this is another one. We will survive, and we will do well, and Sault Ste Marie will be a great community. It is a great community, pardon me, I don't do any Donald Trumpisms here. Sault Ste Marie is great, and will be great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brunie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe the mayor would be able to put out a, some type of press release regarding the, the comments that were made regarding the ten-to, twelve-to-twenty percent increase in taxes, and over a hundred-and-fifty layoffs at, at, at the city. And the reason why I say that is, one of the, this past weekend, of course, busy weekend, one night at the Marconi, one night at the mail market, people approaching, very, very concerned about the statements that were made, and I totally understand why the states, the statement was made, for the judge to understand how crucial it is for our city. But I guess Sunday morning, after church, and doing the regular visit to my mother's, and for someone that only has several TV channels to watch, which are just Italian ones, she has given me a headache, because we were going to re, uh, release her taxes. And for her to find out, we must have hit a lot of people. So, this weekend here, we're, I bet you most councillors were, were flooded with questions and calls regarding this, so I appreciate if the mayor or the C.A.O.
Listen, I'll, I'll speak to that right now.
Well, I would like something also for the press to send out.
Yeah, we have to contextualize this. The, I mean, because, I mean, I had three events this weekend myself as the mayor, and, you know, I, I get approached the same way you, you do. The, the reality is, is the reason why we're going to, to the court right now, and we're taking the stand we're taking, is that we want to avoid certain eventualities. It's tough to talk about those things, and staff will tell you, when I saw the affidavit before it was filed, I said, do we really have to file this, and do we really need to say these things, because it's going to have a pretty adverse effect? But, the reality is, and the lawyer's point was, notwithstanding the fact that from a political perspective, I really wouldn't want to see those things being said, from a legal perspective, they really had to communicate to the judge what it means to our community if we don't get our taxes. I think the judge is going to recognize that it's going to be a really difficult, if not impossible, thing to do, and have a very deleterious effect on the community, if we have to have a substantial tax increase. But I want the judge to know that. The judge needs to know, if the judge is going to be making a decision, what the consequences to this community are. So, the materials were filed to give the judge all the proper information, so the judge could make an educated and informed decision. This will all be a moot point if we're successful, and, and if S.R. takes responsibility for its post-filing taxes, as we believe that it should, and then we will not have a substantial tax increase, and we also won't have substantial service cuts. But the reality is, as much as it might be difficult to accept, we have to find that twenty-five million dollars if we don't get it from this process. And that will make its way back here, and we'll have to make some difficult decisions about services and taxes. So, all of our efforts are to, to avoid that. So, we can put a communication out that explains that to the communicate, the community, I'm happy to do that, and we can work on that. We can't put a communication that, out that says we will or we won't do something or something else, because we don't know what decisions we're going to have to make.
Mr. Mayor, I totally agree with you, and I totally agree how the approach, how staff wanted to basically attack the judge, and tell him, we're in a serious situation here, and I totally agree. So, I think if you can put out a communication to ease the people somehow, would be appropriate, I think.
Okay, well, I'll, we'll, we'll consider internally how to do that, and have some conversations about that, councillor Brunie.
Appreciate it.
On the same matter, councillor Manon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think, to some extent, if I may, your worship, it, my comment will also relate to item six-point-one, because I think the two are tied together, very much so. I think your comments are very well-received, I see councillor Brunie's and councillor Butland's concerns, and, and perhaps to, to our media counterparts that are obviously present right now, to sort of repeat the comments that have been made, may serve, hopefully, to, to alleviate the concerns to our community, because obviously, as we all, we're clearly questioned, and there's a lot of fear out there. But I echo our mayor's comments, it is important, from the legal perspective, that we give the judge that worst-case scenario, or else how are we ever going to ask him to? You're not going to be in a position to ask the judge to, to give you what you're, what you want at this stage, which is to overturn a previous decision, saying, sorry, Sault Ste Marie, you're going to have to wait to collect your taxes until everything is resolved, and this process just keeps on getting delayed, and delayed, and delayed. And where I get into item six-point-one is the mayor's letter to Ernst &amp; Young, and, and I, and I, and I think that was a very positive step, and that really, as it's in our package today, and it was reported in the media as well, that highlights, and, and sort of acts as a, as a, as a parlay, if you will, into the motion, to say, the circumstances are drastically different today than they were at the time of that motion of ours being unsuccessful in the court, giving the ruling that said, sorry, Sault Ste Marie, you're going to have to wait to collect your taxes until this process is done. We were at sixteen million or so, we're almost at thirty million now. So, I, I echo councillor Butland's comments, but we need the judge to know how serious the concerns are for this community. And thank you for the letter, and I do have a question for you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
To the letter of April nineteenth, to the Monitor, have you had any type of feedback or response whatsoever to, to speak of?
I have not spoken directly with the Monitor yet, I, I intend on, on making that effort. As a result of our attendance in court, senior staff has been reached out to by other participants in the process to talk about the matter, and, you know, as it, as it is, but it's difficult to kind of have further discussions, because it is a legal matter that's before the court, but I can say that, as a result of the communications that we've had for, as a city, and as a result of the motion, some of those discussions have begun.
Thank you. Excellent news.
Councillor Butland?
Yeah, I shouldn't even ask. I'm glad that there is some unanimity here, I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I will go back to that, I'm sure everybody in Toronto now knows our plight now, and our potential even worse plight. But, I repeat, we must say, yeah, we'll have to find the money somewhere, but we will never raise the taxes twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty, that is never going to happen. And I want to make that very clear to the people out there. We'll do what we have to do, but we'll never do that. Thank you.
Anybody else in six-point-one-point-one? Okay. On the consent agenda, councillor Manon, are we, where was, I was, I was last at you, you're done?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else in the consent agenda, councillor Shoemaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, six-point-nine, the construction employer report.
Okay, go ahead.
Through you, to the Commissioner of Human Resources. Commissioner, we've been hearing for a number of years that this construction employer, construction employer certification costs the city money, in that we are limited in the competition for our bids when we have projects. It reduces the number of local entities that can apply to be contractors on our jobs, and yet your report says that we would lose revenue in the range of a hundred thousand to a hundred-and-fifty-thousand annually if we tried to decertify. How, how do you meld those two?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Shoemaker. Granted, it's a bit of a complex assessment, but what needs to take place is a change in practice, and currently, we accept money for jobs, services, that fall under the I.C.I. sector, whether that be a guardrail being demolished in an accident, and a third-party insurance provider paying us, whether it be a repair on a bridge that we share with Prince Township, and us charging Prince for a component of that job or service. That all has to end for a period of time, in order to potentially prove our case before the U.L.R.B., that we are in fact not a constructor as per section one-twenty-six of the Act. Greater Essex County and District School Board had a much more simplistic approach, because, as I discovered, they own three properties with the municipality, and what they were doing is, they were doing work on behalf of the municipality, and charging the municipality. They received that income, and they continue to be considered a constructor, while they stopped the practice. Even with the ceasing of the practice, it took them three attempts to decertify, and several hundreds of thousands of dollars. I still support the fact that it's not competitive, it's not a fair playing field, it's not pro-union or anti-union, and I certainly know that you don't feel that way as well, but certainly it's opportunity cost. Do you want to forego the ability to charge for those services in the hope of being decertified? Unfortunately, I can't give you a black-and-white answer, it's just, it's too complicated of a process. What I'm hoping for is perhaps with the next government, wherever, whenever that may occur, that the proper thing is done, and that the legislation that is quite frankly draconian and unfair, eliminates school boards and municipalities as constructors. You may or may not be aware, a private members bill from the Kitchener-Waterloo area fails on the floor to actually deal with this particular item, so, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that I haven't given a recommendation one way or another, but you need to appreciate that it's a, it's a, it's an evolving piece of jurisprudence that, quite frankly, is challenging for us to say yea or nay.
The, um, thank you for that, so, it, there is, I guess there, in order to decertify, which could potentially create some cost savings, it will have to forego some income for a short period of time?
Yeah.
Or for, for a, for a brief period, in order to actually ma, make the application to decertify?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Shoemaker, correct.
Uh, and if we, I guess, you say in here how much that Essex County decision cost them, I think.
Uh, that was the most, that was, through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Shoemaker, that estimate was on their most recent challenge, it took actually three years to fully hear the case before the U.L.R.B.
So, is it, you know, I, I guess is it fair to say that we would need a project of some substance, or some substantial value, in order to make it worth our while?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Shoemaker, I, I would think, and, and I did discuss this with our PWT and engineering folks, we'd have to look at our future projects, assess what those may or may not be, and then determine the cost-benefit analysis of potentially going through this process. And again, you folks are lawyers, the mayor's a fine lawyer, as you all are, you know that you might get a bit of a different chairperson at the one particular hearing, that you need a competent, reasonable chairperson, and get a wonky decision. So, you folks know, as lawyers, it's never a guarantee, but certainly if there's an outlay of hundreds of millions of dollars, I'm exaggerating to prove a point, and we have to give up revenue in the, in the tune of a hundred-and-fifty, similar to the mayor's comments about S.R. tax, that might be a worthwhile endeavor to consider.
With the West End Treatment Plant coming up in the not-too-distant future?
Yeah, well, I was, that was my next question, what, what are the projects coming up that would be of, of a substantial size? That's, that's a good example.
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Shoemaker, the big projects coming up, one is the Civic Centre cladding the West End Plant, upgrade the first phase, and then followed by the second phase after that, and the possibility of Biosolts Facility, those are the big-ticket I.C.I. projects that I see on the horizon.
I would certainly like to, and, and perhaps it's a separate motion, but I would certainly like to see some thought given to whether or not- like to see some thought given to whether or not we go down the road of challenging our certification in one of those projects.
That would be a separate motion, Counsel Shoemaker, but I think staff is, understands the, the, the request, and maybe you can have some further discussions with staff about how you see that coming to pass, and they, we can go from there.
Perfect, yep, thank you.
Counsel Butland?
Yes, just one question to, to, to Mr. Nero. Uh, I've, I've not been lobbied, but have any of the union groups approached you about this? I think I remember when this all started, how many, many years ago, and it was highly controversial at that time, and received a whole lot of attention. It seems quiet. Have you been approached?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Butland, no, I have not, and you are correct, it has been quiet, but again, I attribute that to the expertise of our procurement staff, our engineering staff. Um, we've complied with our obligations as we are currently certified, and that's why you hear of no complaints, because we have been compliant. There's been nothing from labors or carpenters.
Yeah.
Because we've been compliant, and nothing from our sisters or brother unions that, uh, would have any other related concerns.
Thank you.
Counsel Shoemaker?
Yeah, I was approached by a representative of the union, saying, "I'm not sure this is," because I've drafted the motion to ask that we look into this, uh, and I think Counselor Christian seconded it, if I'm not mistaken, and they said, "I think you're going down the wrong path here," and I said, "Well, I'm looking forward to getting the report back, and, oh, you know, we'll make our decisions from there." So, it hasn't been completely without, uh, approach on, on this matter.
That was the union that was the benefactor of, of the certification.
Correct, yes, correct.
Okay, anybody else on six point nine? Seeing none, Counsel Shoemaker, do you have any other matters on the consent agenda?
Yes, uh, six point ten, job valuation for senior and executive management.
Okay.
Uh, through you, and who wrote, Mr. Nero, through you to Mr. Nero, this doesn't, uh, seem like a lot of money to sort of make independent one of our processes, so that we don't have, uh, folks at levels below rating the pay grade for people who would be their superiors. Am I missing something here? I mean, there's no recommendation to actually go forward with it, but it doesn't seem like a lot of money to me.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, so, there's a couple of reasons why there's no recommendation on this particular report. Um, I don't have a budget, nor do I have the funds to even attempt something as, um, as I discovered doing the research for the report, um, as something that's potentially worthwhile, um, in the structure that you have proposed the resolution. Certainly, I believe it's worth investigating through, obviously, our treasurer, if there's some funds that could be found. Um, I was pleasantly surprised, in doing the research, that I was able to find someone that actually has direct knowledge of our plan. As you can appreciate, it's somewhat of an antiquated plan, but, um, and the concern for integrity is, is alleviated by the fact that this individual does know our plan. And certainly, from a process perspective, I can tell you that if tomorrow we went back to the old style of commissioners, that was completed with the assistance of the consultant of the day, and if we stay with the structure of DCIOs, et cetera, that was completed with a consultant of the day, and we have integrity. Uh, so certainly, from that perspective, I certainly support taking this out of the committee's hands, if you will. Um, I would like to make the, the point, though, that in most cases where organizations do use a third party, it's because they've run into challenges where the committee has not been able to be objective and unbiased. I just want to be clear, in fairness to my committee, um, that's never been the case with this team. However, to alleviate any potential of that ever, ever being considered, I certainly support trying to find the money to have this process revisited with council approval.
And, and I didn't bring this motion because of a perceived, you know, issue. I brought it because I thought it was a better process to have it done by an independent third party, not because I didn't think our, uh, folks were capable or objective. Um, I, what I would like to see, and I don't know how to go about this, again, this may be a separate motion, um, or perhaps it's just a, a direction that we can give, I'd like to, you mentioned that there's a group from Kitchener, I believe, that does this and is, is sort of familiar with, uh, with this type of process. I'd like to see if there's an RFP and other, you know, uh, groups could respond to it, so that, you know, it might not be, I think the number was ten or eight thousand in here, might come in at seven or six, or something along those lines. So, I don't, I don't know if that's possible, or how to go about that.
I think there was only one group, though, that the commissioner, there, there, I, my understanding in reading the report is there's only one party that we could retain for this.
Oh, okay, correct.
Yeah, so we, there's, so, as long as that party was available and doesn't retire, we would be able to do this, but would be contingent upon the availability of that one party.
The other, okay, that, well, that's, that's good, I, I hadn't appreciated that when I read this. So, the other, uh, question, I guess, is, there seems to be sort of an initial, uh, outlay to familiarize themselves with our, uh, process, but then after that, it's just either, you know, five hundred and fifty or seven hundred dollars per evaluated position. Would there be anywhere that the initial outlay could come from, and then could the small amounts to, to evaluate each position come from the internal budgets of those departments from which the person would be, you know?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, that might be a question for the treasurer, but I would think that the initial outlay of the, um, visit to the community to review the documents, um, would be a one-time fee that somehow, perhaps, we could find through, uh, an account that's appropriate. Um, going forward, um, certainly, I think that's an option, but again, that's not my, I would think that the treasurer would have to comment on that.
Any, any comment, Madam Financial Officer?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Shoemaker, um, we do have what we call our unforeseen account, um, it's a budget item, a line item that we use for items such as this that come up. There is potential funds available for the startup fee of this, and then any ongoing costs we could add to the 2018 budget.
I'd like to see that, I, I don't know if, if it's council's will, but I'd certainly like to, to have that go forward.
Okay, so, uh, Counsel Shoemaker is moving that, the staff move ahead with implementing this, does he have a secondar for that? Counsel Nero, all in favor? I think that carried, Counsel Shoemaker.
Okay, good.
So, we'll have the clerk put together a motion consistent with that discussion, and, uh, it's carried.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Six point eight, electronic voting at council meetings.
Okay.
Looks like I kept the staff busy, I, I have four or five reports, motions that I had brought on here.
You have certainly done that, Counsel Shoemaker.
Uh, this is, uh, a, a good report, and I, again, not that much money, I thought, you know, I was, I was pleasantly surprised, it was only, you know, seventy-five hundred buck, or eighty-one hundred bucks, sorry, uh, to get this set up, and then a thousand bucks annual upkeep, uh, to have our voting done electronically, where we could manage it and report on it in a more transparent, I think, and open way, uh, within the minutes. I, I had prepared a motion, as the clerk knows, to, uh, to see if we could draw these funds from a potential future reduction of council, but, um, uh, I was advised that referring it to the budget might achieve the same objective, and, and as it's being referred to the budget now, I won't amend that recommendation, but I think this is something that, uh, I, I was speaking to Counselor Myers with, and she said it's, you know, just a matter of time before this is probably even mandated, so it's good to even get ahead of it, and, uh, and just increase the, you know, the transparency and the openness with which we, uh, with which we work here at, uh, at our council chamber, and, uh, so that this information is there for all to see.
Anybody else on six point eight? Counsel Mano?
Counsel Shoemaker probably already knows what types of comments I'm going to make with respect to this, being the counselor who never brings an iPad to city council, but, um, I'm curious, what would happen, and I'm wondering if somebody can answer this, what happens if, let's say, the internet goes down, or what happens if the counselor's iPad gets stolen, or broken, or, um, doesn't work, or the battery dies, or more than, you know, maybe the more realistic one, let's have, say, the internet goes down. So, do we just stop a council meeting, or do we go into the old-fashioned way of voting, uh, in person? What, what do we do when technology fails, because it inevitably does happen?
I think we would just keep on keeping on, as the chair of the meeting, we just keep on going, and you vote, and we record the votes, and that would be it.
On paper. So, I, I mean, at the end of the day, if somebody doesn't have an iPad, you just keep on keeping on, you still vote.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel Mano, the, uh, application does allow for the clerk to register manually for somebody who doesn't have the technology, or it isn't working.
Oh, okay.
And then, of course, in the case of the internet going down, or electricity or so on, then we would proceed with paper and pen, the way we used to.
I suppose, Counsel Mano, if you didn't want to press the button, we could press it for you.
Well, what, what I noted from the report was, there was a comment that if somebody did not vote within the allotted time, that the clerk could put a vote in for you, and I thought that, that seemed a bit strange, that it's saying what, you know, are they voting on their own for you?
That would be in the event that we were calling the vote, and you couldn't find it on your iPad, you would audibly say it, and then the clerk would record it, and it would be reflected on the screen.
All right, fair enough. In that sense, then, all right, um, those are my questions.
Okay. Anybody else on that matter? Seeing none, any other matters, Counsel Shoemaker?
Yes, six point five, uh, well, no, wait, before I get to that, comprehensive review of conventional transit, six point four.
Six point four, yep.
I don't know who this is directed to, but, uh, good that this is, uh, being done. I actually just had a, uh, concern from a, a resident who said, "You know, our transit system is not all that user-friendly." Um, well, will the, this process include a, um, uh, what do you call it, an, an open house, or a, interaction with users?
Mr. Vera?
Yes, sweetie, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Shoemaker, it will involve open houses with, uh, with residents to provide input into the system, and it really is meant to be a comprehensive review of, uh, transit operations.
And, if I'm not mistaken, I think I've heard before that it may even include some consideration of various other possible locations for transfers, things along that nature?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, well, that's good.
Okay, on the same matter, we'll go to Counsel Brunie and Counsel Nero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to Mr. Vera, when was the last comprehensive risk, uh, review of the transit? I thought it was done about two thousand eleven, twelve? Because I believe I sat in the review process.
Maybe would Susan Hamilton Beach have, because that was, it was part of Public Works back then, do you recall when the last time we reviewed the, the transit services?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Brunie, as far as an actual route assessment, I think it has been, again, beyond my time, so...
And when, just to give us some context on that, how long have you been in Public Works for?
How old am I? Sorry, uh, it's been at least ten to fifteen years, I would think, yes.
Well, Mr., what I recall with Mr. Scott, that all the routes were reviewed, and there was some changes, and there was a consultant that came here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Brunie, it wasn't a comprehensive review, to my knowledge, it has been in isolation.
Okay, so what's the difference of this comprehensive risk?
It's not a comprehensive.
Comprehensive review, sorry.
Let's go back to Mr. Vera, he, maybe he can walk through what we're doing here, and then...
Please. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Brunie, uh, yes, this, uh, RFP and the study that will be done, will take a look at, uh, the complete transit operation, so it will look at, um, the routes, the, um, the current location of the terminals, the transfer points, it's going to look at the hours of operation, so it'll provide a, uh, a full look at transit operations and make recommendations as to how we can improve service in Sault Ste. Marie.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Vera, just wanted to ensure that when we get going with this review, that we consider, uh, the future, hopefully, the future building of the Splashpad at Bellevue Park, and some consistency of transit, uh, moving to that location, uh, because that issue was brought up when we were looking at locations, and there was a thought that we didn't have enough bus service at that location, uh, to get people who didn't have their own means of transportation, uh, to get to Bellevue Park. So, I would just hope that we take that into consideration, even though it's not there yet.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, um, the, uh, the study will look at, um, uh, current ridership on the different routes, it will also look at, uh, major points of interest, if you will, in the community that people want to get to in order to make those recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just want to recognize how important I think this project is. Over the last year, I've met with a number of people in the community from different constituencies and groups, and a consistent theme is, is that our transit services need some, some attention and some investment, um, and it's an important matter, it's a matter of the economy, and moving people around is a matter of social equity, so people can get around, and, and I, I'm glad we're looking at this, so I think it's positive. Anybody else on that matter? Seeing none, Counsel Shoemaker, you almost done?
I've got one more, but it's, uh...
It's a lengthy one.
Six point five.
Six point five.
Tax, two, twenty seventeen tax rates. I spent a considerable amount of time on the phone today with the Commissioner of Finance, or the treasurer, trying to wrap my head around this, it's pretty dense. Uh, or may, either, either that or I'm pretty dense. Um, what I didn't understand, what it appeared to be from the tables, and, and I think I, I now know I'm wrong, but it appears from the tables, Commissioner, that if we maintain the ratios that we currently have in place, it would result in an effective tax increase of eight point two-seven percent to, uh, the residential class. But if we go with the proposed tax ratios, it would result in four-point, you know, four-point, whatever we approved at budget, four-point-three or four-point-six percent increase on the residential side, but what it, what also struck, struck me from these charts at, and, and the appendixes, is it appears that there would be a fifty percent tax increase for the industrial class. Now, am I reading that wrong?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Shoemaker, um, just to go over a couple of points, um, as I discussed with you, assessment is just a means of distributing the tax levy. So, as assessment changes, and we have a reassessment year for 2017, if the percentage of tax burden that is absorbed by one tax class changes, in this case, we have a large decrease in our large industrial tax class. So, that means they're gonna, if we left the same ratios as 2016, that means that they would have lower, lower amounts dollar-wise, how much they would pay for taxes. But, as I said in my report, this is a zero-sum game, so where there's a decrease, somebody has to increase to take up the rest of the tax burden. So, in this case, it would be the residential, if we left it at the starting ratios, being the eight point two-seven percent versus revenue neutral, where everybody has the same percentage tax burden at four point six-one. Now, this gets complicated a little further, because, um, you will look at the large industrial tax ratios, and the ratios are going to increase again. Um, but what you have to look at, too, with the revenue neutral, again, being that they're going to have the same tax burden as they did before, dollar-wise, they're going to pay pretty much the same as they did the year before, except for the tax increase in the levy itself. So, even though the rates are gonna go up, dollar-wise, theoretically, they should stay the same. Now, the other complicating factor is that within a tax class, again, let's pick on the large industrial, you have one major property owner that had a fifty percent decrease in their assessment, so even within that class, there's going to be a shift of burden, uh, amongst the large industrial property tax class holders. That's where another tax tool and policy comes into play, that the province had put into place, and it's called tax capping and clawback. So, what happens there is that it's another type of phase-in, so the property that saw a huge decrease in their assessment, it will only be phased in at approximately five percent of the assessment change each year, which means that they will not realize the full, uh, change in their assessment within the class, and it protects the people that are within that class also, so that they don't all of a sudden have to pick up the additional tax burden that was shifted because of the other property owner losing their assessment.
I think that pretty much sums up why I thought this was dense. I, I appreciate, I appreciate the explanation. My biggest concern when we spoke earlier was, I, what I don't want to see is, because our largest, uh, property taxpayer in the large industrial... our largest property taxpayer in the large industrial class has gone down by 50%...
Their assessment has gone down.
Their assessment has gone down by...
It's important that we, like, make that language clear, right? So the assessed value of its property has decreased 50%.
Right.
So to recover the same amount of tax, the rate goes up.
That's right. But we're, I don't want to see the rate for the others in that class go up by so much to, you know, I don't want to see the, the Tube Mill, for example, have their rates go up by 50% to offset the 50% decrease in our other large industrial taxpayer. Is that going to happen?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. That is the purpose of the tax capping and clawback policy, so that that doesn't happen.
And just to be clear, the capping and clawback isn't a city-assess Sault Ste. Marie regulatory mechanism, right? It's a mechanism through the provincial regulations. But it's to stop that specific issue that you're raising.
Right. So, so they will not see a corresponding increase to cover off the lost revenue on the other property taxpayer?
They will over a period of years, but not immediately. And it'll be phased in, like I said, it's very, very slow. We've had tax capping and clawback in place since the late 19, or 1900s, 1998. It seems like the 1900s, but since the late 1990s, and we're still not at a capping. So that means the properties are not at their actual assessed value at this point. It's still being clawed back or capped.
So what will those other properties that are within the large industrial class see their rate go, or not rate, see their taxes go up by, on a percentage basis, next year or this year?
I can't definitively, definitively give you the number for that, because we haven't done the tax capping and clawback calculations, which will be done after we pass the tax rates. But it will not be exorbitant. It will not equate to the 50% change in the assessment of the one taxpayer.
What are we talking, though? Is it like, is it 5%? Is it 15%? Is it 25%? Where, what ballpark we in?
The amount of the assessment change is 5% per year. So it's going to be a long time before that happens.
So, so it'll be...
And again, it's weighted. It depends on what their capping position is and how much they increased and how much they decreased. It goes through that, the whole class, so I can't really say what one property will be, because not all of them will be exactly the same.
Sounds like it'll be at least 5%.
I don't, I can't give you a definitive answer. I'm sorry.
She's not not trying to, Council Shoemaker. She really isn't in a position to give you the definitive answer.
But, but my position will change if it's 50% or if it's 25%, whereas if it's, you know, if it's in the range of what we approved our increase at, that's, that's a big difference, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. As we did discuss earlier this afternoon, it's not a significant shift. There will be a shift, but as due to the provincial capping and clawback provisions, it will be mitigated somewhat. It also brings to the fore what's been talked about quite a bit in the last little while with respect to tax and tax ratios and tax assessment, why it's so important to have the assessment base grow. Because that will be one of the main means that through which you can deal with the, some of the pressures that happen in terms of those shifts within the various tax categories and between tax categories. But yeah, it will not be significant. The Treasurer's right, though, until we actually go through the calculations, and it will change from year to year based on the assessment changes throughout all of the classes. It's not going to be anything significantly different from what was described and approved as the levy for 2017.
Okay. That, that's, I think, the comfort that most of us would want, that it's not going to be four times or five times as much as what we approved. And can this change on a year-to-year basis as need be or as circumstances change?
The tax rates are approved every year, so we may be able to change the capping percentage. There's a range that you can do. There's also some new tax tools that have come in for capping. So there's always that option to look at different ways, and it is something that we're going to investigate over the next year also.
Okay. So we have Council Bruny and Council Romano.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess a question to CFO. On your scenario two, where it's a standard industrial property, you got the property code, then you got the property count. So that's how many properties is affected here on the standard industrial property? Am I correct?
Just, ma'am, just turning to the same one.
I think it's your last page.
It's scenario two?
Yes, ma'am.
Where it says property count, that is the number of properties, yes.
So there's 15 properties, okay. So if you, if you keep on sliding over, 2016 municipal CVA taxes, it's 25 million?
Yes, because this is in the millions.
It's 25 million, right?
Yes.
So for 2017, you're projecting 38, which is a difference of 12 million at 48%. So when I look at that, it looks like it's increasing to 38 million. That's a 48% increase. Am I right?
You've lost me at what you're looking at. I'm sorry, Council Bruny.
Standard industrial property?
In scenario two?
In scenario two. So that's the bottom of the screen. Are you on paper or...
Yes, sorry. Okay, okay, I see where you're looking at now. That is the tax change, and it does say 48%, but that is before tax capping and clawback comes into play.
Okay, tax capping and clawback. Okay, go ahead.
When that comes into play, then that may change. So this is looking at it just strictly CVA to CVA. The tax capping and clawback changes when that CVA actually happens, because it only allows so much percentage per year. So if somebody has a significant decrease, they're not going to realize that, except over a long period of time, so that the other properties that would see that increase, again, will only see that over a long period of time. So that 48% is before the tax capping.
Okay, so it's before the tax capping, but we don't know what that figure is going to be, as Counselor Shoemaker mentioned, correct?
It is not going, I am pretty certain, I can say without a doubt, there should not be a property in there that's going to see a 50% increase in their taxes after we're done the capping. The capping is going to be done, and it's going to be a bylaw that's coming on on the next meeting. So we can't analyze it at that point and provide it. The reason the tax rates, they have to be approved before I can put it into the system and calculate what the capping is going to do.
I'm just concerned, out of those 15, like, I see that number there, it's staggering. It's 12.5 million dollar difference. I'm worried that those 15 properties, businesses, are going to be severely hit. And you're saying they're not.
They should not, because within the class, the capping and clawback should protect them. That's why the policy is there, so that you don't have a shift within the class.
But I'll... It's a regulatory policy, Council Bruny. Okay, so, so like what you said, if it didn't exist, what you're seeing there would ha, because I went through this, because I was concerned about the same thing. If the regulation didn't exist, what you're seeing would happen. So the regulations exist to prevent that from happening.
But my question is, how can we vote on this if I'm not 100%...
You have every year.
Well, no, no, I can...
No, but you've, this is every year, this is how you voted on these things.
Well, this is the first year I've seen this much detail.
Because we're giving you more information now.
Well, then I have questions then.
Yeah.
Well...
But I mean, it's not like, this isn't a new thing, right? Let's just be clear about that. This is the same way we've always set tax rates.
Mm-hmm. I'm just not sure how I can vote on this, because the way Michelle is explaining regarding the tax capping and the clawback, I don't know if I'm confident that these 15 properties, business owners, won't be affected.
To the degree that you think they might be. Well, I mean, the staff, senior staff is making a pretty specific recommendation that they won't. If you don't accept that, then, you know, maybe you can spend some time talking about how it works. Counselor, sorry, CEO?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny. And again, we have to come back with the next bylaw to show you what the capping is. So you'll be able to see what those numbers are in terms of the impacts on the...
So wouldn't it be better to come back with that first?
We have to do the rates first, be able to go out, and then we can come back with the, with how that then gets applied. I do remind, too, that as part of the 2017 budget deliberations, council did look at tax ratios and decided on a revenue-neutral approach, which is also part of the tools that have been made available to us by the province. But it's, it's a common practice, rates first, and then to then be able to go forward and do the capping, and that would come back as a bylaw for council consideration.
Are you done, Counsel Bruny?
If someone else wants to go, I got a few notes here, I just want to...
Counsel Romano?
Well, forget it now, I never speak.
He was the next on the list, Counsel Bruny. Nothing I can do about that. Go ahead.
I'm going to hazard a guess, and I'm going to make a bet right now that I'm going to be much quicker than Counsel Bruny just was. So I just want to be on the clock right now. To Commissioner Shell, I was pretty sure I had this down, and then Counselor Shoemaker asked a question, and then you answered, and I got a little bit discouraged. Can we, and I hope this is fairly succinct for everybody in the room and at home, is it not just fair enough to say this? We lose a certain amount of money into the, into our, from our tax base. We've got all these different classes that pay a certain amount of money into the tax base. What we're doing to fix that now is you're going to take basically a pro rata share from each of the bases, based on how much each of those classes, sorry, from each of the classes, based on how much each of those classes pay in to the entire tax base. And this way, there's an incremental change, or an increase, incremental increase per each class to make up for that amount. Now, you're giving me the puzzled eye, so...
No.
Great.
The bottom line, when you use revenue-neutral ratios, it's maintaining the same tax burden between each class. So let's say if the tax levy, let's not even say tax levy, let's just say the operating budget levy that we have to raise was the same for 2017 as it was in 2016. If there was no shift in the assessment, which means the tax burden stayed the same between all the classes, you would pay exactly the same as you did the previous year. But because there was an assessment shift from the large industrial to the other classes, most importantly, the residential, because that's where the bulk of the assessment is, correct? When you have that shift, that also shifts the tax burden, which means now, even though if you had the same amount of levy that you had to raise, the tax rate would be higher in the residential and lower, pardon me, I shouldn't say tax rate. The amount of tax that the residential would pay would be higher, and the amount that the, the large industrial would be lower, still raising the same amount of the levy, because you've shifted where that tax burden is. Because again, assessment is just a way of distributing the taxes. So each class has a certain percentage burden. If it changes, then you can use what we're doing right now, recommending the revenue neutral, so that that tax class is going to pay the same dollar-wise as they did the year before.
So I'm pretty sure we're saying the same thing, though. It's, it's going to be basically on a percentage basis, though, so that no one feels the burden any more than anywhere else.
You're just setting the, regardless of where the assessment landed, you're saying residential's going to pay 60-some percent and industrial's going to pay, I think it's six or something, they're still going to pay that percentage of the levy. And then it's going to be adjusted within each of the different properties within that. So if there was no levy increase each year, they would be paying exactly the same percentage of that.
Right. And, and the provincial policy simply allows for it to happen incrementally over time and not to be done within a single class, to be spread over all the classes.
That's the revenue-neutral ratios, correct?
Okay. So I've got it. I have a slight comment to make, but beyond that, I think I won my bet.
Okay, so any more, any more questions? Counsel Bruny, are we done with your questions? Okay. Do we, are comments necessary?
I just had one comment.
Okay, if you can make that, we'll move on, please.
Thank you. When we voted, or when we had it before some time ago, that we were going to take this policy with respect to our, our tax rates, our business tax rates of waiting the five years, I took a very negative approach towards that. I think we're seeing, as I commented earlier when we dealt with the Planning Act matter, our industrial tax base is shrinking. We need to find a better way to deal with things. We need to find a way to look at increasing that. I would ask, and I would encourage staff, similar to, similarly to how council has asked, to find the money for the downtown initiative. And you came to us with a great idea, and we've been able to put that forward and implement it. I'm personally not pleased with us waiting five years to see, and now we're down to four years, to see what's going to happen in the future. This wait-and-see approach, I just do not think is going to work. Our tax base on the industrial side is shrinking. We need to create incentives, and we need to create these efficiencies. There was a council resolution I put forward some time ago with respect to a continuous improvement fund. There was a few other resolutions. The employee incentive program, there's some other ones. Like to see these come forward quicker, sooner rather than later, so that we can look at ways to put some money into our revenue stream beyond just relying on the tax base that we have that is ever-shrinking. We need some solutions.
Okay, council, any other matters on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we pulled 6.2, so if we can vote on the consent...
6.6.
6.6, Counsel Bruny.
Outside agency grant?
Okay.
So if this resolution is approved, are we going to be guaranteed that we will have to provide this to the outside agencies that, that are listed right now?
Well, we've already approved these things in our...
But for the future, so what's the resolution for them?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counsel Bruny. The resolution is for this year, because we've both been approved.
Just this year only.
And as you know, as part of the cycle now, each year, they would be having, have a requirement as agencies to submit their plans, which council, at that juncture, would have an opportunity to make any resolutions that we'd like to bring forward at that time.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Counsel Nero?
Just one more item, Mr. Mayor.
Which one?
6.1.2.
6.1.2.
Just on the bike path petition, I wanted to make council aware that at our Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee meeting, this issue was brought up. It wasn't on our agenda, but it came up under open new business. And although Prac didn't decide, decided not to bring something formal to council, they asked me if I would just make it known to council that the majority of Prac, majority of members, supported the multi-use path. So I said I would bring that to council's attention tonight.
Thank you.
For that matter.
Any other matters on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Are we pulling the one that...
We pulled 6.2.
6.2?
Which is the retention of restructuring lawyer fee update, at Counsel Romano's request.
Can we pull 6.5 to vote separately?
Sure.
Thank you. And a recorded vote on that.
So we're pulling 6.2, we're pulling 6.5, so all in favor of the consent agenda with the exception of 6.2 and 6.5? Carried? So now we're dealing with 6 point, we had three councils over here, none of you raised your hands on the consent agenda. Counsel Christian, Counsel Campadis, Counsel Huppin, and you're all in favor of the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, so we're good there. So we have 6 point, we have 6.2. That's been pulled, we've already debated it, so I don't see any reason to debate it further. All in favor? Carried, opposed? Okay. So we have 6.5, we've already discussed this, all in favor? Recorded vote, sorry, the clerk. Recorded vote on 6.5?
The recorded vote on 6.5 will be when we read the bylaws, because there's no motion on the consent agenda of the 6.5. It's the bylaws themselves.
Okay, so we'll pull that bylaw then, and we'll do recorded vote on that bylaw. I'm sorry, Michelle?
Bylaws is not...
There's three bylaws? So the request is a recorded vote on all three bylaws, Counsel Bruny?
I just want a recorded vote on 6.5.
Well, there's no, there's no motion with 6.5.
There's no motion?
It's just the bylaws on the agenda that approve, approve the rates. So if you have an issue with just one rate, you might want to...
Yeah, I'll tell you what the...
Counsel Nero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, if at this point we're not going to approve the tax ratio bylaws, where, where does that put us with the, with the budget?
Well, you kind of bring the whole thing, the staff needs to do this.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get out here, I...
Staff is formalizing the process, it's already been approved, and just bringing it back to us.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. That's what I'm trying to get out here before we get to voting on the bylaws. I need some clarification, because we already approved this.
We did.
This is just bringing it back to formally pass the bylaws.
I agree.
So.
When we get to bylaws, 2017-70 is adopting tax rates, 27-71 is the tax ratios, and 2017-72 is the final tax billing.
Okay, well, we'll deal with those when we get...
Against, it'll be easier for you guys.
Okay, so it won't be recorded? Okay. So that leaves us with the remainder of eight, which is the animal shelter services, 8.3. So we'll have the clerk read that motion, and then we can have Council Huppinen speak to it if she would like.
A motion by Councilors Huppinen and Shoemaker, whereas animal control enforcement is an important service provided to the municipality, and whereas on August 22, 2016, a council report from the Chief Financial Officer Treasurer indicated that in the last 10 years, the cost has increased 64%, with wages and benefits accounting for 50% of the cost. And whereas the 2016 fee for service to enforce animal control and shelter services was $538,009, and whereas the total operating budget for the shelter for 2016, as reported on the Canada Revenue Agency website, was $850,000. And whereas with a substantial cost for an important service, citizens of Sault Ste. Marie have expressed interest in the day-to-day operations of the shelter and information on services provided. Now therefore be it resolved that city staff direct the management and board at the shelter to provide a presentation at a council meeting or a written report with information on the shelter's operations by August 21, 2017.
Okay, Council Huppinen, you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do. Simply, again, another fairly simple motion, I think, but very important. It's probably a request that's never been asked before, but to me, it's a lot of money, and I think people should know what we are, what they're getting for their $500,000. I know the staff are presently working on a contract to replace the old one that was 1983, I believe. But besides that, I just think it's important that the people in Sault Ste. Marie know what they are doing at the shelter, what are we getting for the money, and how does it compare to other shelters in the province? So, and I've been, I've been sort of harping and subtly trying to get this done for the last couple of years, so that's all I'm asking, is just what are they doing for their $500,000 that we're giving them? I hope, hopefully I'll get the support that we'll get to see it.
Any further comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. So we have the bylaws left, I think. Madam Clerk, is that correct?
That's correct.
Council Shoemaker?
Let's have a question on one of the bylaws.
Sure.
It's the 11.1.2 agreement with Algoma University. I'd mentioned this to the CAO today, and this is as a result of something Council Fata brought up a while back. Part of the, part of the scholarship money that goes to Algoma U is pegged to dependents of municipal employees, and Council Fata had suggested during budget deliberations that he wanted to see that changed. I've put together a motion, and not realizing that this was on tonight's agenda, I put together a motion, hoping to put it on the next agenda, to ask Algoma University to change that criteria so it's to all residents of Sault Ste. Marie, not just dependents of municipal employees. But then when I saw this agreement, it has in Schedule A that criteria. So I want to know, and perhaps the CAO can answer, if we pass this agreement today, does that prohibit us or restrict us in any way from asking Algoma University to change their criteria for their scholarship, because we have to then amend the agreement?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Shoemaker. Again, this was all approved as part of the 2017 budget, and as part of the package that was submitted for Algoma U, they were talking about scholarships, and there's no shift. So these agreements are reflecting that 2017 piece. That said, there is an, you know, we feel, and I've actually conversed through email over the weekend with the clerk, and we feel that it does not preclude you bringing your motion forward later to actually be more specific about what you want in terms of how that's going to be allocated in scholarships, as a request of Algoma University.
Right. Okay. So that will, will in no way, if I'm hearing you correctly, be restricted by having passed this agreement today?
Well, I think once the agreement's passed, Council Shoemaker, if Algoma University isn't friendly to making the change, then we wouldn't be able to force them to, because we'd already have an agreement. I think Algoma University would be friendly to making the change, because it was a condition originally of the cities, not Algoma universities. And if Algoma University makes that change, this scholarship is open to more than just those employees. So I don't think that they would, I don't think they'll be the problematic party in this.
Right.
And if you give city staff the direction to make that change, and they meet a willing partner, I don't see any issue with making that change in two weeks, or four weeks or six weeks.
Perfect, without having to defer this agreement.
Is provided Algoma University's agreeable?
Right. And I've emailed with them, you know, only one of the staff members, they seem relatively agreeable, but obviously it has to go to the...
Well, I understand they'd be really friendly to it, because sometimes they actually give out the money, notwithstanding the fact that it might not be an employee, because they don't have one applying.
Mm-hmm.
Right? They don't have, they don't meet their scholarship, but I don't think they necessarily hold the scholarship back because they don't meet it.
Right. Okay, good.
So, but well, yeah, they would, they would be the hang-up there, and I don't see them being a hang-up.
Okay. Perfect.
Okay, so can we deal with the three bylaws that Council Bruny finds objectionable first, and then we can vote on those, and then we can, can we vote on those collectively, those three together as one, and then we'll vote on the remainder of the bylaws?
So resolve that bylaw 2017-70 being a bylaw to provide for the adoption of property tax rates for 2017 be passed in open council this 24th day of April 2017, and bylaw 2017-71 being a bylaw to provide for the adoption of tax ratios, and bylaw 2017-72 being a bylaw to provide for 2017 final tax billing be passed in open council this 24th day of April 2017.
All in favor? Opposed? Bylaws carried, those three bylaws are carried.
And a motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that all bylaws under Item 11 of the agenda under date 2017, April 24, with those three exceptions be approved?
The exception being 72, 70, 71, 72. All in favor? Carried.
And then I have a motion by Councilors Nero and Shoemaker, resolve that this council proceed into closed session to discuss a proposed disposition of property, a proposed acquisition of property, and I believe there is an additional item subject to solicitor-client privilege. Further, that should the said closed session be adjourned, council may reconvene in a closed session to continue to discuss the same matters without the need for a further authorizing resolution.
All in favor? Carried.
And a motion by Councilors Nero and Huppinen to this council now adjourn.
All in favor? Carried.
Rachel, you guys have been talking about that before. Steve?